Meeting, if you would, please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, announcements for this evening. The dedication of the Abbey Griffin Walkway will be held on Thursday, September 20th, 2018, at 7:45 a.m. down at Abbey Griffin Park. Life Scout Brigham Parker of Troop 48, who will be leading the construction of an outdoor classroom in Greater Woods, which is directly behind the Merrimack Middle School. He's doing this for his Boy Scout Eagle Project. A Greater Woods classroom, outdoor classroom pancake breakfast fundraiser will be held on September 22nd, Saturday, from 8 until 10:30 a.m. at the Church of Latter Day Saints, located at 110 Concord Street in Nashua. And we told them we'd get that announcement out, so if anybody's free for that, that'd be great. We have some sad news this past week, and that is Carolyn Ann Disco, Nelson Disco's wife, passed away on Wednesday, September 5th. Nelson has been, and still is, a longtime volunteer on several town committees. Our deepest sympathies go out to Nelson and his family and friends of Carolyn. Also, we lost Paul Mandu. He was a member of the Merrimack Fire Rescue Call Division. He was an EMS lieutenant and responsible for the EMS volunteers in the call department. He passed away on Sunday, September 9th, and Paul was the chairman of the Town's Technology Committee, and as well, we'd like to extend our deepest sympathies to all those who knew Paul. And then lastly, most recent was a longtime participant in the community, Carolyn Whitlock. Her husband Stan passed away, and we'd like to pass on our sympathies to them as well. And if you'll join me for just a moment of silence for Carolyn, Paul, and Stan, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. On Thursday, September 20th, well, bear with me. Okay, Thursday, September 20th, at 7:00 p.m. in the Matthew Thornton Room here, there will be a joint meeting of the Town Council and the School Board. Wednesday, September 26th, in the James Master Colopar Elementary School, All Purpose Room, located at 26 Pedwus Lake Road, a public hearing will be held regarding PFAS. On Thursday, September 27th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room is a regular meeting. Thursday, October 11th, and Thursday, October 25th, both at 7:00 p.m. here in the Matthew Thornton Room will be regular meetings as well for the Town Council. Eileen.
Okay, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation will hold a public hearing regarding the proposed improvements to New Hampshire 101A from Craftsman Lane to Continental Boulevard, and on Craftsman Lane at Boston Post Road intersection. The public hearing will be held at the Merrimack Town Hall, the Matthew Thornton Room, 6 Pedwus Lake Road, on Tuesday, September 25th, 2018, in case you were wondering what year it was, at 7:00 p.m. So, Tuesday, September 25th, at 7:00 p.m. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation will hold a public hearing regarding the proposed improvements, in parentheses, widening to the FE Everett Turnpike in Nashua, Merrimack, and Bedford. This public hearing will be held at the Merrimack High School, 38 McElwee- McGowan. Isn't that awful? Not know that yet. On Wednesday, October 3rd, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. The Merrimack Police Department will be holding a firearms safety training course on Saturday, October 27th, from 8 to 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This course fills up quickly, so don't wait to sign up. Contact Community Services Officer Bill Vander Side at 420-1842 for further details. We are pleased to announce that EverSource is once again offering a free FreeOn Day event at the transfer station. On Saturday, October 13th, residents can bring their FreeOn-based appliances to the transfer station, and the normal fee for disposal will be covered by EverSource. FreeOn appliances include refrigerators, freezers, dehumidifiers, and room air conditioners. So, once again, Saturday, October 13th, at the transfer station. This is a very popular event last year. I believe it was the first time we'd ever done that. So, thank you to EverSource. Thank you.
Drinking water, or if I didn't, I apologize, the drinking water in the groundwater. Broad Street Commission approved the $405,000 grant that MVD had solicited. So, I want to thank my colleagues for the letter in support of the MVD application. It goes before the Executive Council in October. I'm not anticipating any problems, because those tend to be more of a formality thing for fiscal fees, because it's already been, it's coming out of our trust fund. It's, I mean, drinking water trust fund, so it's kind of, but I just want to thank, like I said, I want to thank my colleagues, and it was a pleasure to vote in favor of that particular project and all some other projects that we approved. We approved close to $22 million in grants and loans for communities around New Hampshire that were seeking to improve their water quality, either through infrastructure improvements or through specific upgrades or expansions to their current setup. So, some exciting things going on as it relates to providing clean drinking water, not just here in Merrimack, but to other communities as well. There was a, I have PFAS set up on my Google search engine, so it triggers, anything that has the words PFAS, I get updates. And there was a story that came out of New York regarding Pusick Falls being left off of a particular community assessment. It's a federal study, community assessment structure. And they're, the CDC, in conjunction with the ATDSR, is proposing to do a comprehensive community exposure assessment to communities in the Northeast that were impacted by PFAS. One of the communities that was outlined in the New York article was Newburgh. Newburgh is kind of new to me, to me, when we talk about PFAS. It's Pusick Falls, Merrimack, and Peas, and Bradle Boulevard. So, it's kind of interesting to see Newburgh in that particular, in that story. So, it got me thinking, wondering, you know, what was the specific criteria that caused Newburgh to be selected as opposed to Merrimack, as opposed to some other communities? So, this was, and I apologize for blindsiding a lot of people on my request, but I was wondering if the Council would be willing to support a letter being written to our federal delegation. Senator Shaheen, Senator Hassan, Congresswoman Custer, Congresswoman Jay Porter, asking for them to outreach to ATDSR and CDC, asking if there is any criteria, and could Merrimack be considered for this particular community assessment, community exposure assessment. It's very comprehensive. It gets into some of the blood-circum work that we had asked Health and Human Services to conduct in our community about a year ago. But it focuses on the health piece, and it's much more, it's much more community inclusive. They're looking, based on the story that I read, they're looking to try and get health data from a lot of the people in the communities through this community exposure assessment. So, didn't they already choose Peas? I believe, I believe they had. Okay, but Peas wasn't referenced in the story, that's the whole thing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think. It's been a while since.
But I'm just, I'm just wondering whether or not the Council feels it's pertinent at least to send a letter asking for the federal delegation to act on the communities behalf, to see whether or not, you know, if there is criteria, do we meet the criteria, and can we be considered? And if you think it's premature, I'm more than happy to restrain myself.
We'd never say restrain yourself.
I guess you would.
It rings a bell. I think we've discussed this before. And I'm trying to remember in what context, didn't we? It seems like we have, maybe I've spoken to someone about it. But I know that Peas has been chosen, and I think that there was, for some reason, it's in the back of my mind, did you take a look and see?
No.
And I don't think we've discussed it per se, but I think there have been discussions about trying to get Merrimack involved, and it was, came out, I think the places have already been chosen. And I think that, you know, the representatives have already been contacted about Merrimack as well. But I'm sorry, I don't have specifics about it. Just, it's very familiar to me what you're talking about.
And I, I went through looking to see if there was anything, you know, as it relates to New Hampshire in the meeting, and I haven't seen anything. So, I'm just, I'm just wondering whether it's, let me, I guess, let me rephrase my thought. Is it appropriate to outreach to the federal delegation, asking for status as to where that community exposure assessment is in the process, and are they still looking for communities to participate? And I don't know whether, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I guess, Bill, why don't we reach out to the federal delegation?
Because it's the CDC and the ATDSR, which are federal agencies.
And they, yeah, I get that, but they ran this, they're the ones that chose the communities.
No, they didn't choose the communities. It was ATDSR and CDC, to my understanding.
So, wouldn't we want to talk to them directly?
I would want, I would want some political club to talk with them, to say, why aren't you looking at, looking at New Hampshire specifically?
See, I think they have.
I'm sorry? You think they have?
I think they have.
So, I guess I'd like to have some understanding.
Yeah, I don't, I can't be specific, I.
If it's been done, I don't want to do it again, because I think it just might make us look a little silly that we've already done it. I don't recall myself, but if we can look into that, I'm not opposed to doing that.
There's no reason why we couldn't call and find out. Inquiring is not a problem.
I know there was a communication that was sent out by the delegation a couple of weeks ago where they were asking for Merrimack and Peas to be included. But, you know, in my mind, it doesn't hurt either way, because I think they tend to forget about Merrimack, and they remember Peas.
Where'd you see that? Because I didn't see that. Maybe that's what I'm referring to.
It might have been, it was in the newspaper, that Senator Shaheen, don't mind my mouth tonight, Shaheen and Hassan had sent, had implored or spoken on our behalf to be included.
I apologize to the Council, I missed that.
But on the other hand, I don't think it hurts to just keep reinforcing the fact that Merrimack has been here for three years, dealing with this. And, you know, the federal government recognizes the issue with Peas, because they're a federal installation. Merrimack is not, so I don't think it hurts.
No, I'm making a call.
Okay.
In my opinion. What do you think?
Could you, would, do you still have a link to that, to that article, so that I can look it up and see what exactly what it's referring to?
Sure, absolutely.
So then, I'll know, I'll know what I'm talking about, sort of.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
I think Paul may have found the article.
Well, while Paul's doing that, I'm going to let everybody know that if you were here for item number one, under recognitions and resignations in retirements, and number one, under appointments, those have been postponed. So, if you're here for that, there's no need, unless you choose to hang around, there's no need for you to do that. We all said it? Are you, are you good, Bill?
I guess, does the Council want me to reach out, or do we want Eileen to reach out? Because I have no problem making a phone call.
I think Eileen's gonna review. Yes? I'm sorry, I shouldn't be.
No. You guys are in charge, so I would be happy to review, you know, what's been done already, if you want me to do the research, or if you wanted, if you feel like you'd like to do that, Bill, then it doesn't matter at all to me, not even slightly.
I get the time to do it, it piqued my curiosity, so I don't want to, I don't want to tax you, I don't want to tax you anymore with this, so.
Then do it.
Is it okay with my colleagues for me to do that?
True.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I'll behave. No, that's true, I won't, but.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Next on the agenda is Highway Garage Project.
I thought we were going to set a date?
Oh, did you?
Date for the upcoming public meeting?
Oh.
Yeah?
Well, it's on the PFAS update.
Oh, oh. I wasn't anticipating input, but if we should. No, Eileen, please.
As I had spoken to you, each of you, I told you that I was asking Sarita, our DPW, Deputy DPW Director of Wastewater, who has significant scientific and chemistry background, to kind of pour through all of the documents and the data with the thousands of pages and things like that, and kind of put together a tutorial on what's going on, and what's, you know, what is, what the exact status is about groundwater, about stormwater, about the smokestacks, about the, you know, the fish, the, all those kinds of things. And I've asked her to put all those things together with factual things, and put them up on a map, so that the story can be told with facts. So, to make a long story short, I'm asking you if you would consider postponing the meeting to be after the 26th, sometime in early October, or sometime in the middle of October, so that we can feel like we're totally prepared and more knowledgeable about all of this enormous amount of information and data, that I certainly am not qualified to, you know, decipher for you.
I think it's a good idea.
I would strongly encourage that, and from a personal perspective, to be able to thoroughly understand all the documentation, what the facts are, the Council therefore being able to focus, we're going to focus our attention, and be able to have all that done before the meeting, so that when DES comes, we are prepared with facts, we have a thorough understanding, we are focused on what our goals are, I think it would be a much more productive meeting for us. And I don't think there's any timeline, like we have to do it by a certain time for any reason that I'm aware of. Is there a? So, I think it would be just much more productive, as long as we don't, you know, have a time that we have to meet or something. So, I'd strongly encourage it.
Yeah, I agree as well, Nancy, because Clark is still waiting for the results on the testing that they're doing on that pilot system for being a scrubber for the stacks. Hopefully, he'll have that back by the time we meet. According to him, last week, he didn't have the results yet. So, I think, because then we can also have time not only to review the data, but to also formulate our questions, and say, what are the timelines, what's the operational work plan?
And I agree, I think, let's get a little more time, let's go in informed. But also, a question on my mind is, are we in the process of including MVD, the commissioners and their staff, to attend this meeting and be involved with it?
Well, I would think so. I, and I guess, I'm looking at it from the perspective of various, you know, various things, soil, water, groundwater, stormwater, you know, various brooks and that kind of thing. And I'm, as they relate to the wells, and their own wells, and their own interests, I would be very interested in having them come if they're, if they're interested. It's just, I'm not sure where that line.
Well, and the only reason I know that Bill and I went to our last Concerned Citizens, the advisory group meeting, and one of the commissioners, actually both of them, expressed an interest in being involved in this meeting. They felt, they did feel that, obviously, this meeting was at our request, and we should be running it, and I agree with them. But they did want to be involved, and I think they want to bring their staff in on it, too, so. Well, I guess Bill and I will, at the next meeting, give them a formal invitation once we've set a date, so.
So, we'll wait for your, for recommendation.
So, are we thinking that we're going to get something from Sarita after Columbus Day?
I don't know what that date is.
October 11th, is the next Council meeting?
Oh, she'll have it by then, yeah, definitely. She's saying next week.
So then, potentially, we're looking at trying to put on a meeting the end of October, then?
It depends, I mean, you can have earlier meetings, you don't have to have it at your regular Council meeting, you can, I think, a whole host of different things that could be done. Doesn't really, yeah.
Does it matter?
I'm just.
There's no timeline.
I'm awaiting Eileen's recommendation, is what I was looking for.
What I'm saying is, is that when Sarita goes through all this information, realistically, I'm expecting to have it presented to us at the next Council meeting on October 11th. So, am I hearing that we may meet separately before the meeting on the 11th? Depending on when Sarita's able to provide a report to us?
Yeah, no, we have a meeting on the 27th as well. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I understand.
I think we do, yeah.
I understand we have a meeting on the 27th. Eileen's telling me that we're, you know, we're not going to meet the end of September, so now I'm thinking we're going into October with everything.
No, no, I think she's saying the meeting, the 25th meeting, we're not going to do it.
Twenty-six.
The 26th meeting, she wants to postpone until October. But we're going to get that information from Sarita probably within a week or so.
The state meeting, she wants to postpone.
Not a Council meeting.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We just need to get new dates from DES, and when they're available.
Sometime in October, right?
Right, yeah. We all good? Are we all good? All right, next on the agenda is the Highway Garage Project update, and I didn't know if Paul would, wanted to speak to that.
Yeah, I'll speak to it, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate it, I didn't get an email, so I wasn't prepared myself.
The building continues to be erected, I believe. The highway garage portion for the bays has been roofed. We are putting on, the office space portion has been, underlayment has been given. We're going to be roofing next week. We're also going to be laying the foundation, the flooring, the cement flooring in the facility next week, hoping to be inside within the next two weeks. So, once we get inside, then all the finished work starts, and we're still on target for our November opening, so that's good news. We're getting more and more information as we come down with things and decisions that we have to make, like color schemes and things of that sort, so. Those are the big, the big discussions that we've been having the last couple of weeks.
I hope Jackie's down.
We're giving Jackie a whole carte blanche.
Absolutely.
Whatever color she wants.
I said, don't even talk to me about it, just see Jackie.
Exactly.
Not that we don't trust your judgment.
You should not trust my judgment when it comes to color schemes. So, thanks, Paul. Comments from the press and public, if you would like to address the Council, you could sit here or come over to the microphone over here, please, and state your name and address for the record.
I really don't need the microphone, but I'll be a customary.
We do, the reason we need it is because this is televised, so they can hear you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Noah Mandell. I reside at 168 Attica Road, Merrimack, half of the past 35 years. When I moved to Merrimack, the cable system was Merrick Cable owned by a friend of mine, Harmon White. I had an option to buy the system from him, and chose not to do it, and sold him some options on some of my systems. Maybe that was a mistake. He sold to Haron, Haron sold to Regis, who owned Adelphi, Adelphi, I think, sold it to Comcast. That's sort of the sequence of events. Now, it says you're coming up for renewal. I spoke yesterday to Brian T. Rogan, who wrote an article on cable franchising, although he's a very well-known cable lawyer, representing a lot of municipalities all over the country. And he pointed out to me that, I am an attorney, and I've done things with the FCC before, that there's a bunch of new proposals which are going to emasculate your already minimal abilities to regulate cable. So, if you don't do it now, you're going to have a lot more trouble doing it in the future. Now, there are two tracks toward franchise renewal. I don't know where we are, I haven't paid attention. There's an informal track and a formal track. And I'm here to encourage you to take the formal track for the renewal, because otherwise they're going to run you over like you're a squirrel on the bridge, okay? Now, I've got some strategies that Merrimack can do in the next minute or two, I'll try to be efficient, to help yourselves. One, you have very little control over rate regulation. That horse was closed out of the barn by the feds some time ago. But you do have a right about other things, including technical standards, legal operations, fraud, other things. I'm here with a client, he wants his three minutes, I think he'll see them to me, as a matter of fact, because he's not too happy with what's happening with Comcast either. Is that true, Mr. Kavakas?
Correct.
Okay, so, the next, I'll talk about an example of a violation that's there, and I'm going to quote the COMP Act. That's the Commercial Advertising Loudest Mitigation Act, which says that they're not supposed to have louder commercials than the ambient program. Have you ever been in your house when it's really quiet, and in the morning, your baby's sleeping, your dog's sleeping, your wife's sleeping, and you're screaming from the other room, "We will sell you everyone a car!" And they scream at you, and I know it's a violation of the standards. Now, not only is the broadcaster MUR in violation, because he's playing what the advertising magnus he did, I can take 10 seconds to tell you, they do it by quieting one stereo signal, doubling the other one, phase reversal, popping, they're using algorithms which are defeating the spirit of the legislation. And you know what? A common carrier who delivers that signal is in violation of the law also. So, since I happen to hear these commercials screaming at me out of Comcast, they are liable. You really cannot refuse to renew their license, but you could say, we're not going to renew it until you can demonstrate you're in full compliance with the law, and I don't believe they can. Now, the last point I'll make in this cycle is Thornton, Camden, Holden, Plymouth, were among the towns in New Hampshire, which had given cable franchises to companies that didn't do the job. And then they gave me a franchise, and I came in and I did the job, right over these other guys. I fought the holes in the wall. People didn't want the old, bad company anymore. I don't really believe I have $100 million to spare to come in and wire over all of Merrimack. But if the town of Merrimack issued another cable franchise, there goes Comcast monopoly there, we have the only franchise. That reduces their value by 50% for sale. Every one of the four companies that sold Merrimack's franchise made a profit on it. Now, I know what was in the franchise, because I've argued with Comcast over the years. And among the, I love this agreement, this requirement in the law in the franchise, that there will be a copy of the franchise agreement in the local office. Where's the local office? On the Mass line? They're moving to South Dakota. I mean, you have a right to enforce provisions in each of these previous franchises, which they seem to forget every time they move it from pocket to pocket to pocket. Now, I have other things on my list to discuss, and I could ad lib it, but what I would really like to do is entertain any questions from the board or from the public about how strategically Merrimack can go forward and try and protect its consumers from the exploitation of Comcast. Thank you for the three minutes.
Thank you very much, and if somebody chooses to ask questions or speak, they are allowed to, but it's generally a public comment period, but, Peter.
Mr. Mandell, I'm interested to see your list, and if you could email it to the Council.
I can't even read my own handwriting. Yeah, I'm happy to have coffee with you anytime, and if you really want to get involved in this, and if there's a cable committee and they want to sit down, I've written reports and books on this. I could have studied with six briefcases full of documents that I wrote on behalf of the federal government. I worked for the Massachusetts Cable Television Commission, and we advise many municipalities, but to take these six sentences and tighten figures pointless. But anytime you want to see me, or sit down.
Nick is doing our cable contract, and he'll be here tonight. Even if you sat with him and said, hey, these are some important facts, you know, hey, if you've got the experience, maybe there's something there that can, you know, help them out, tip them off to something, that's all I'm suggesting.
I would be happy to do that. That's all I want, is, I'm frustrated. As a consumer, I have no rights, but as a citizen, I can turn to you for some recourse. Thank you very much for giving me the platform. And with whom should I be speaking?
We appreciate it.
Hi there. Wendy Thomas, Tenwakap Falls Road. The first thing I want to say is, Bill, keep doing that Google search. Nice job catching that one. I saw that article also, so that's good. It was also encouraging to hear the discussion about PFAS tonight. That's good to hear. Short statement, I'm going to be reading a short excerpt from an article that was updated on September 4th. The title of the article is, "Michigan Says PFAS Makes All Fish in Huron River Unsafe to Eat." Michigan officials now say PFAS test studies show that all fish in a five-county span of the Huron River contain too much contamination for people to eat them. An updated warning from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services expanded to, quote, "do not eat" warnings from earlier in August, now saying that all fish in the waterway from Oakland County to Lake Erie should not be consumed. "It's just so disappointing and frustrating," said Laura Rubin, executive director of the Huron River Watershed Council, as she considered the expanded warning. "We've done so much work on the Huron, and it holds up to be a high-quality resource," she said of the 136-mile river. "Now, we're facing extensive cleanup. We face decades before we can eat the fish from Huron. We've seen test results of 19,000 parts per trillion in Merrimack. We have a river that runs through our town. I've seen people fishing in it. My son used to fish in that river. Has the town tested any of the fish from Merrimack, and if not, are we planning to?" Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Sure, yes.
That will be part of the information that we'll be putting together.
I heard you said the word fish earlier, so that was an urgent thing.
Is anybody who would further like to address the council? Seen none. Greg, Peter? Yes, please, if you would.
I'm not sure if this is the time my chair may be from conversations.
Oh, you.
Is this the time, or is it later?
No, it's going to be, it depends how the cable franchise agreement goes, that conversation. Yeah, I will definitely let you know. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is that what you want? Thanks, Peter. All right, item number one, as I had mentioned, has been withdrawn from the agenda this evening. Item number two is the council to present a plaque to the Merrimack friends and family for their ongoing support of Merrimack Parks and Recreation and the welfare departments. And so, let me, the, well, let me see. This evening we had here Julie, Barb, Bev, Carol, Beth, Cara, and Wendy Thomas, all of the Merrimack friends and families. So, if you could come up here, we'd like to recognize for all you do.
I was given a list.
Yeah, I know, but I'm Carol. This is Julie.
Hi.
Hi, Beth.
Thank you for everything. You guys are amazing. I was guessing this evening that it had to be at least a dozen years. I don't know, I don't know what the total is, but...
Well, for the backpacks, it's been 16.
Backpacks, it's been 16 years.
We know that. For 16 years, we've been doing the backpacks for the welfare department. And then we do the Easter egg hunt with those.
That's been 27 years.
Do you know the total contributions that have been made to the town? It's enormous.
I know. Well, this past year, we made over $5,000 worth of donations to the community, and one, we did five scholarships to the Camp Natick Scholarship Fund.
Yes, we're speaking for all, because I'm sure we're just impressed and very thankful.
Yeah, and Saturday's our yard sale, so that's our biggest fundraiser of the year. One of that ended this spring. Right in here at the park lot, so if you're going by, stop by. That's how we raise our funds.
It's amazing. Let me see here. We have Merrimack friends and family in appreciation for your generosity and continued support of the Merrimack Parks and Recreation and Welfare Departments, given by the Merrimack Town Council on September 13, 2018. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sure, thank you. Excellent. Thank you so much.
All righty. The appointment, as was mentioned earlier, has been postponed. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Council is holding a public hearing to consider the acceptance of recommended changes to Chapter A 198 Administrative Code of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article V. Eileen, did you want to just touch on this, or?
We skipped the conservation commission.
Yes, the conservation commission has been put off until another meeting, because... Chief.
Well, basically what it is, is that we, as you know, during the budget this past year, we had discussions about reorganizing the department to a small extent, whereby we would add a deputy chief and we would eliminate an administrative lieutenant's position. And so, as we're going through the whole idea of going, doing it, we realized that when we took that position out a few years ago, three or four years ago, that it was taken out of the code. So, we're, this is basically just a kind of housekeeping to try and do what it was that you voted to do, but putting it in the code. So, this is the public hearing on that.
Wanted to make sure, there was a question about what position had been removed at our last meeting when we discussed this. You did, I don't know if you were able to find out that the information was accurate, that in fact, the lieutenant position was to be pulled, not a captain? I didn't know if you, I just wanted to make sure you knew that, because...
This is, you're clarifying something that I wasn't, whether I missed it at the budget meeting or not, this is the first clarification that I ever see.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if you had looked into it. I just wanted to be sure you knew that.
No, you know, going back to the conversation, you know, at the last, at the last meeting, like I said, if I was wrong, I was, if I was wrong, I was wrong, but I just, I just didn't remember, okay? I just didn't remember, you know, I had no recollection that we talked about it, so it's just, it wasn't, you know, it came across inflammatory. I apologize, but I had no recollection. I wasn't pointing fingers at anyone. I had no...
No, I just, I didn't know if you had thought of it. So, Tom?
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize for my junior, senior moment last meeting when I brought up the whole question of whether or not it was set up right. And Peter was good enough to go through the minutes and remind me, or to, yeah, remind me that we had in fact discussed it exactly as it was planned, and I appreciate everybody's efforts in straightening me out. Thanks.
All right. Chief, did you want to speak to this, or?
No, just briefly, what you've been handed is the new organizational charter. I didn't know if that would make it a little easier to follow as to what the changes would be and as far as what it'll look like once the positions are in place. It's very difficult to draw little lines.
Perfect. Yeah, I'm going to open momentarily. All right, we all set up here? All right, being this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing at 7:39, and if anybody would like to address this item, please step to the microphone or the table next to the chief. Seen none. I'll close the public hearing at 7:40.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the recommended changes to Chapter A 198, the Administrative Code of the Merrimack Town Code pursuant to Charter Article V be moved to the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion by Counsel Boyd, seconded by Tom Thornton. Any further discussion on your motion, Bill?
Nope. Thank you for the work.
Very good. Thank you. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. 7:00. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
Legislative updates to, Representative Berry was here to bring anything to the table if you would like to. This is the time.
So Representative Berry is here saying that they will tear down Exits 10 and 11 if we'll take industrial and content at the Boulevard.
Now it's on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure when, whether it's while you're still alive or I'm, but you asked that question. A couple of things. Number one, I was trying to get here for the PFAS update, and I missed it. I apologize. I had rearranged the sock drawer, and I get confused with the colors. Well, I've got Argyle socks. There's a meeting next week at P's. It's with the ATSDR. They're a subset of the Centers for Disease Control. I contacted them trying to find out what they were doing and how they were doing it, and whether we were included. We are included. They will be talking to us. They're going through a CAP, Community Action Program, first over in P's. They have the contaminants because of the firefighting foam for the jets that landed over there, and they have a, I won't try to do any comparisons, but I did talk with Clark Price today. He said he was waiting to hear from you as to when you would like to have the next update from him. They are moving along well with the folks, so please get in touch with them. That was, that was the main reason I stopped here. The second one was just, there was a meeting this morning on just that subject, Counselor Boyd. Our senator, Daniels, is the chair of it, and it was, it was interesting. It was the organizational meeting, and Chris Wachek from the DOT was there. He and I have fought over this for several years. We may continue to fight, but it's going to be an interesting, interesting battle. That's how, this was just the organizational thing this morning. The second meeting I was at this morning was on something that we've talked about recently, which Anna brought to you folks later, earlier. The utility assessment process, I was, I was told, and I'm comfortable after seeing it this morning, that they're close to an agreement. The concept is, we will find a consistent assessment value across the state. It'll more than likely be monitored by the, what do they call, what do they call a group? The MDA or something, the government, the state group that looks at their assessment values. And there will be a phase-in period for those folks who are going up and down fairly rapidly. The concept is to make sure that all of the utilities are assessed in a similar fashion throughout the state. As Counsel Albert said to me, a thousand acres on the ocean is different from a thousand acres out in, out in the hinterlands, and they ought to be assessed differently. Well, they should be, but I want the same assessment standards across the board. There are five different ones. I'd try to pick one before, instead of sending it to a study committee. I think they'll wind up with that. You should feel comfortable that that's going to happen.
Dick, thank you. Thank you for addressing that. My question is, if you see something happen here, do you see, I mean, we're coming into our, setting our tax rate the upcoming year. Do you see this affecting it this year? Do you see it giving us a year to prepare?
I'm glad you paid attention. So, there'll be at least, there'll be a phase-in period, whether it's five years or 10 years.
Okay.
And it certainly won't be in law for next year.
Okay.
I mean, we turned the bill into a study committee. They'll turn the study committee into a bill. I will sponsor it and go through with it. Then it'll go through the process of the House, you know, the full House, that whole process before it gets signed. Then it'll go through what we call Administrative Services, and they'll put in process, the processes. So, you've got at least two years.
I heard you say phase-in. I just wanted to kind of get more of a clarification on it, that's all.
Well, the young fellow in the corner keeps picking on me.
Eileen?
So, the methodology that's being used and considered, is that going to make us lose money or gain money?
Yes. I have no clue.
It makes a big, it really does make a very big difference to our town, so...
You're absolutely right, and it does across the state. The, they don't yet know which one they're going to pick. They're in the process now of evaluating the five different ones, and the concept is that it needs to be consistent so that you're not being taxed without representation. Today, you are.
Okay.
Because it impacts the electricity rates.
Right, but it also very strongly affects the taxes.
Absolutely.
So, I just want to make sure that our representatives are representing the town and are aware of what our assessor is doing for her methodology, and making sure that it's, you know, understanding why she's using that particular methodology, so that we don't end up losing a lot of money. It's possible, it's very possible that we could lose a lot of money.
I've got to make the assumption that your assessor is talking to the Assessing Standards Board, because they're going out to contact all of the cities and towns, finding out what specific ones that they're going through now, which ones have the significant variations from two or three years ago. And it's just, we've got to get it under control, because they're...
All I'm just saying is, I know, I know we have to care about the whole state, but we have to care about here, too, you know, as far as, because we've, you know, we've had situations where we've had to pay big bucks back to Fairpoint and that kind of thing, and we count on a certain amount of money to run the city down. And we really, you know, I just like to make sure that we're keeping that in mind, that's all.
We understand.
Okay, thank you.
You may not like the final result. I hope, I hope it turns out that almost no one likes the final result, because then it will be fair. When you look at the concept and how it impacts the electricity rates and keeps driving the cost of electricity up, and it drives it up for your taxpayers as well as the ones across the state, at least this way, there'll be, you'll be taxed similarly across the state, maybe, maybe up, maybe down.
I'm imagining...
It might help you that I have, it will come back to my committee.
I'm imagining that the assessments by the communities isn't really the major driver of electric rates. I'll accept it's part of, but I don't think it's a major driver.
It never used to be, but what's happening is it's, there's some, there's some significant increases in assessment of utility properties in different towns, and that goes right on to your rate plus 10%. And that you pay for some other town that has decided that the assessment rate should be considerably higher. So, we're just trying to level that playing field.
All right. Let me get Tom first, and then...
Oh, no, no, go ahead.
Do you want to follow on with what he's talking about?
I'll follow after you, Tom.
Well, I just wanted to go back to the previous discussion. You talked about a committee meeting, and Bill said something as you were walking up, and I didn't follow all of that. Maybe you could give us a little more detail on what committee's meeting or what group is meeting to talk about doing what, when, where, why?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bill, I'd like to hear from you.
I understand.
Senator, Senator Daniels passed the bill. Senator, Senator Daniels passed the bill.
Passed the bill?
A bill.
Sponsored a bill.
Which, passed the bill which turned into a committee. And he's chairing the committee which looks at getting rid of the tolls at exits 11 and 10. Supposedly that's the focus of it. As you know from years gone by, that will not be the final focus. I spoke to him and suggested a couple of things that he ought to be looking at. But that's a concept. How do we eliminate the tolls at exits 10 and 11 in Merrimack?
So there was a bill passed by the legislature, signed by the governor, that established a committee that's looking into it?
Yes, sir.
The committee got a name or something, or out of curiosity, or... If you don't know it, that's fine, I just thought it...
Should be right here because I went to it this morning. Pardon me while I take my glasses off. All right, what day is today?
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Number thirteen. It's in the Senate calendar, that's why it's not here. Oh, here it is, September 12th, yesterday. Committee to Study the Removal of the Toll at Exits 10 and 11 on the FEV Turnpike in the Town of Merrimack.
Okay.
The bill was HB 2018.
Great, thank you.
Peter.
Just a comment, I guess. Follow-up on the town manager. Dick, thank you for being here and I, you know, it's not to beat up the messenger, I appreciate you coming here and filling us in. But, I mean, I do want to follow up. I mean, if something came across inadvertently that could potentially penalize homeowners in Merrimack on our property taxes and so forth. I guess I'm assuming that yourself, as long as, and the rest of the delegation wouldn't support something like that if we reached out to you and said, "This could significantly hurt us on our taxes." I guess that's kind of what I'm hoping and just the last commentary, and it's not directed at you, it's just in general. We might see a little bit of a discount, but I don't believe, I don't believe we'll see all the money back on our tax bills, I mean, on our electric bills and I just don't believe that with EverSource, so...
Did you say discount? What did I mean?
If, if, let's say, the evaluation goes through, I mean, this, we had this discussion before. Granted, our property taxes might go up, but our electric bill will go down. But I don't agree that it'll go down to the same amount and that was a concern for me. You following me?
The property taxes go up, but the electricity bill will also go up. You said the electricity bill will go down. No. If you raise the assessed valuation on a utility property, your electricity bills will go up.
If, if this, if the legislation as it was originally proposed was going to go through, we had been told that granted our property taxes may go up, but our electric bill would go down. EverSource would, that, we'd see that savings that they see, we'd see that as customers. That's what I was told in that email.
From whom?
From yourself and other members. And Paul and my...
Basically, what Council Albert's saying is that because of this new way we're gonna do the utilities, our assessed values would go down, which is our denominator, our numerator would be still there, so our tax rate would be higher, affecting our residents of Merrimack to pay more in taxes that way. And by having this EverSource being, or the utility being funded this way across the town, which would be lower in the case of Merrimack, value-wise, that they would see less of a tax burden on real estate taxes, that that savings that EverSource saw would come back to the taxpayers of the state and reduce their electric bill by X amount. And what Council Albert, I believe, is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we're, it's not going to be a one-for-one offset, it's going to be maybe a two-for, and then they're going to come down one cent, maybe two cent up, one cent down, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's not going to be a one-for-one offset and that's, I believe, is the point Council Albert's making, is that it's going to affect us because we, we know that our utilities are taxed at a higher rate based on the way we do things than what the committee is looking at right now.
You're clear with that?
Oh, I'm very clear with it.
Okay. Am I clear with it?
It seems pretty basic.
You know, I've been, I've been doing this for more than a couple of weeks now. The issue, the issue becomes, we don't know what the final numbers are going to look like. We have some outliers who have raised the property assessment on the utilities considerably. I'm talking 200, 300%, which requires that utility to pay that much more in taxes, plus 10% because they're going to get a return on investment, which drives the electricity rates up for everybody in the state. Now, it may be a little bit here, but when it keeps going, then it's going to just drive it up and it continues to drive it up. What we're trying to do is make certain that the method to assess the properties, the utility properties in your area, is consistent with all the cities and towns. If it's not consistent, if somebody else decides to try a higher level, then you're paying their taxes. So we want that level. Now, will it, will it drop Merrimack? I don't know, I, I mean, there's what, more than 100 cities and towns, so that evaluation is ongoing.
Okay, and that's it, we'll just wait and see.
Did you start to say something?
Council, Council here has been recognized.
Hi there. You know, I agree with what you're saying and I'm glad it's being looked at because what I think the people are really experiencing, which kind of doesn't make any sense to people, is the fact that their electrical bill is one thing and the delivery charge is more than the actual electricity that's being charged. So, we need to do something that lowers that without impacting the physical, you know, the physical intake of the town from a tax base as well.
You're absolutely right.
If that all makes sense.
The other components, the other components are distribution, transmission.
Right.
The costs that we have to pay ISO to manage the grid. We have a forward capacity market we spend billions of dollars on to make certain that there's electricity ready to go if a generator dies. I mean, there's all these things behind the scenes. I was going to talk about the governor's veto process this morning and one of those in there is going to drive electricity rates up, but it'll be the rates. We have, I think it's the fourth highest rate in the country. And we spend about $5 billion a year in electricity and you and I pay for this. Budweiser doesn't, Budweiser doesn't pay for electricity. We do when we drink a bottle of Bud. You know, when you think about it. Now, because they're paying higher rates for electricity here than they are in St. Louis, we're not going to be getting more people, more buildings, more plants here because they'd rather go to St. Louis if they're going to expand. Same thing with Sig Sauer. So, there's a group of us that are trying to drive the total cost down. Some is within our control, some is within FERC, the federal, some is with ISO, which is a regional group, and there's some that we can do here. Trust me. That's why I got, I used to be redheaded.
Well, I just think it's a shock for people when they open their electric bill and, you know, that the delivery charge is like twice what their actual electricity bill is.
You know what really bugs me? When they talk about the subsidy for, pick it, renewable portfolio or solar or wind or offshore wave things, they say, "The impact on a typical homeowner's electric bill is five cents or 10 cents or 15 cents." That's not the real impact. The real impact is what it is doing to jobs and the economy and the state. Every time we add a million dollars to the cost of electricity, that's a million dollars that could be used to invest, to bring a new business in. So I'm pretty, I'm sorry.
The only concern I would have is the clarity of the, we hear about algorithms lately. The criteria by which they're going to make the determination on what that assessment's going to be based on. And who's going to be making that determination?
Me? No. Ultimately, it'll come through my committee, but they have...
And they're going to base it on what? And is the committee who's defining that criteria?
On the group that met this morning, that is, that is what they're doing. They're gathering the data on the impacts for the different methodologies across the state. The guy at the Department, DRA, Department of Revenue Administration already has something that he's going to try to lock in and say, "Here's the impact of A, B, C, D," the different ones.
Is there a possibility of towns being notified as to the possible options that are being considered and what impact that would have on the towns?
Right now, it's the reverse. We've asked the towns to give us their impact, what's happening with them, so that we can understand what it is.
So you've been asked?
The towns have, no one has asked you?
I don't know, because they haven't asked me personally, so I would have to go ask the assessor.
Mr. McCauley, have you, have they come to you?
They would go to the assessing office.
The assessing office?
Nobody's mentioned it to me, it doesn't mean they haven't.
Because obviously each town, whatever their assessment algorithm is, criteria, you have to do an assessment of the validity of that assessment. I mean, obviously, our assessor bases it upon something and so does Nashua and so does whatever, duh. And then what are those factors upon which it's based? And that might change town to town, based upon what the criteria is. So all of that has to be taken into consideration, is my point. And does the town have the opportunity to unknow the possible impact? And what is the process by which you are thinking about changing it?
Okay.
Because an assessor is usually based, their assessments are usually based on accepted standards of assessing. When they do properties, we've been educated as to when you're doing a commercial, when you're doing this, that. There really are standards by which they use to be able to make a determination. So those are the kinds of issues that the committee, those members should be discussing.
You're absolutely right.
And is EverSource a major component of that or are they a recipient of it? Are they the one, do they have influence as to the criteria?
No, and I don't want them to have influence.
Exactly, I agree. They should not.
Now, might they? I mean, by talking to somebody else, sure, but they...
They have their lobbyists, I'm sure.
They, they don't want to. They would like to keep the assessed valuation low because if, the more you assess, the higher the rate goes. And that's something over which they really don't have control. So let me answer this, this way. I know they were out asking towns to give them information, whether the DRA has come to you or has gone to, what's your, what's the lobbying organization? I forget the, there's a municipal association lobbying, lobbying group that, and I know they're deeply...
We're not part of them.
What's the name of it, though?
NH, New Hampshire Municipal Association, we're not part of them, so it's not going to affect us when they lobby again for us.
Good, then you, then you won't holler at me for what I said to them. I said, "It's easy, we'll just, we'll just make it so that the utilities at the municipal level are tax exempt and we won't have this problem."
See, the only lobbyists we should have are our reps.
Yeah, users.
You guys.
Users.
And so that's my point, is that you have to, as a rep, I'd like to encourage critical analysis of the methodology that would be used. And hopefully, any feedback that has been provided, that it is looked at logistically, is it fair? Is it going to be fair to us? That's all, that's all I'm asking.
Let me put it this way, if I can. Right now, there's at least five different methodologies that are being used. So they're fair to some of the towns and not fair to others.
Define fair.
What, what I'm...
That's the point, define fair.
So, so what I'm trying to do is to get one, one methodology that's used across the board so that you don't have to worry about your neighbor using a different one that drives up the tax rates.
I understand your general argument. My point is, my concern would be that as a rep from Merrimack, you would be, hopefully, look at the information received from Merrimack in terms of assessment and make sure we're getting a fair play. That's all. And hopefully, if, my understanding is, our assessor does use standards based upon something. It's not, "We need more money, so let's charge them more." It's based upon some data because she has to use that for other kinds of things that we do. But that's also taken into consideration because not all municipalities may use that same standard. That's all.
We agree.
I have Billy Boyd first, unless you just...
I'm all right.
Bill? Just to circle back on exits 10 and 11. Senator Daniels and I were at a function this morning, this is how the genesis of the conversation that I was made privy to. And part of the exchange that he asked me about, and I said, "I can only speak for me, I can't speak for the Merrimack Town Council," is that would we entertain taking industrial drive in the section of Continental Boulevard that runs from Dunkin' Donuts down to 101A of Pennechuck Square? And I had said to him, I go, we've, I said, "It's not the first time that we've been told or been offered, you know, those, to take control of those particular roadways." So I think if there's any conversation regarding removing 11 and 10, I would hope that our representatives will be coming back to the council to ask us whether or not we would be interested in taking industrial in that section of Continental Boulevard because, as one of our esteemed colleagues who sat before us, Tom Mayon once said, "You know, we have no idea what condition that road is in." You know, it's one thing to do a paving project, to strip and repave it and have it look nice and pretty, but, you know, what's underneath the, what's underneath the tars would be of, and I, and at the time, I agreed with Council Mayon, that would be a big concern, is what is actually under the road? What are we, what responsibility would we be assuming if we agreed, in theory, to absorbing responsibility for industrial and continental boulevards? So that's really the, you know, that was the conversation that I had had with Senator Daniels, is, you know, and I hate to use the term quid pro quo, but it's, you know, if we, if we do away with 11 and 10, would you take industrial and continental?
I think we really would have to have some more work done on that.
Oh, absolutely.
To have a full understanding anyhow.
No, I agree, which is why I finished, I said, "Whatever discussions you have, you should, you and whatever Merrimack representative should come to the council and..."
Yeah.
You know, either come at this particular moment or create an agenda item so that we can have a...
And that's what it would have to be.
Right, I agree.
Yep.
So, just in the interest of transparency, so that people knew that I had the conversation.
Thanks, Bill.
Not our first rodeo. It's not, it's not our first rodeo.
No, it isn't.
We've been through this and, and if I remember correctly, the, this board said to me a few years back, "No way in hell will you get the exit 12 down."
And surprising, I have to admit.
You can't do it.
I'm going to do that as often as I can, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council Harrington.
What I wanted to say is that, I'll get information from Lauren. So Lauren Martin, our contract assessor, will know what those five methodologies are and what hers are and compare and contrast the numbers for us so that we'll, you know, you can keep, at least you will be informed of, you know, of the impact on the taxpayers.
Would you do me a favor? Would you make sure that I get a copy of what she's using?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Because I'll bring it to the committee to make sure that if it hasn't been included, we'll include it. I'm under the impression that they went out to, they told us that you were going out to the towns to get their assessing standards.
I'm sure that they are, I'm sure that they have, but I think that, because Lauren does several different communities, but what I'm saying is that the council is interested... The council is interested in knowing how it will affect the taxpayers, not in, you know, whether or not... know, whether or not, they want to know how it's going to affect the Merrimack taxpayers. So I'm going to give them the numbers that Lauren did, and then I'm going to use, I'm going to compare them to method 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, and see how much they, in most cases, I'm sure, lose, so that they know what's, numbers.
I can make certain that it gets seen if you give it to me. If you get me the data, I can make sure it gets seen. But I'm assuming that they've already come to you. If they have not, please get it to me. Because I'm the one who was driving that committee.
We're misunderstanding each other. You're talking about what is her method, and I'm talking about how much money the town will gain or lose. That's what I'm talking about.
You have no clue now until we pick the method that we're going to use. We're in the evaluation process of which of those methods.
Okay. What I'm saying is, there are five or six methods. All Lauren has to do is plug our utilities into each of those methods, and compare them to what we're doing now, and see if we, if we lose a lot of money, or we get a lot of money. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Please share it with me. Thank you.
All right. Anybody have any further questions? Nope?
No. Are you guys curious about what happened with the veto session today? Oh, okay. No problem.
Veto session.
The governor vetoed six bills. Three from the House, three from the Senate, and we acted on them today. You can catch it paper tomorrow if you want, or I could tell you tonight.
Which ones did you-
I thought you might like to know.
I guess you can leave it in the last telegraph on the end.
No, I was, which ones were they, please? And what action might have been taken?
Is that what you can do at this stage?
I'm just curious.
Unless you were thinking about putting up a large solar system, like four or five megawatt solar system, that one, that one got removed. He vetoed the parole board thing, and we overturned his veto. They wanted to, it was a 90-day thing for nonviolent opioid kinds of people, and they weren't going to be able to get some kind of service, there's not service, services available to keep them off the street and get them back straight. There was a bunch of different stuff on there. Licensing requirements for autonomous vehicles. We passed a bill that would allow Level 5 vehicles, which are those that don't have any driver at all. That, you know, the new artificial information, and they're going to see things that we can't see. He vetoed that, and that got, his veto got overridden, so we're going through with that bill to help, help people come here and test out the vehicles. 1736 was, they wanted to change the, right now, there's a $75,000 maximum that the DOT can use, that they're going to repair bridges and dams in an emergency. We increased that to $150,000, knowing that sometimes they get in trouble, they run out of money, and we want them to go ahead and fix it without having to go back to government council. He didn't like that, we overwrote it. Let's see. Three Senate bills. And net energy output, oh, the biomass, the biomass plants up in the North Country. There were six of them that came to us, and we passed the bill last year to give them a significant chunk of money to make them whole, because it's not, it's not efficient, it's not working right for them, they're not making money on it, but it does, it does help the logging industry, the trucking industry, it helps clear the woods and things up there. So that, that became a pretty interesting discussion. That was, that was a Senate bill that we had, the Senate overturned the veto, and we also overturned the veto. I won't take the time to go through with you and explain the difference, just that this will drive your electricity costs up some more, to your point.
I thought so.
Representative Healey, please.
I thought so.
446, which was the net energy metering limits, right now, at 1,000, 1,000 megawatts, you can, you can net meter. So if you're running a solar system, and during the day, you use, you don't use up the full output of it, then you can, you can feed it back into the, into the net, and you will get paid. It used to be you get paid the full retail rate, we changed that for residential, so it's some rate in between. But you'll get paid the retail rate, even though they could buy electricity at the wholesale rate someplace else. And because the solar system, I shouldn't put myself into it, but I've been living this. The solar system doesn't generate enough electricity to have its own module, where the ISO Group in Worcester, Mass, outside of Springfield, they're the ones that control which generating station gets turned on and off based on the needs during the day. So we have to kind of guess as to when there's going to be sun, and there'll be excess energy and that whole thing. So they wanted to expand that to 5,000 megawatts, which I think Nashua had one that they were going to expand, and give them that same kind of a break. He vetoed that, and the Senate overruled, overturned the veto, and we did too, by one vote. Was not, by one vote, we won't go there. The last one was penalty for capital murder. There was a bill passed that wiped out the death penalty for capital murder, and he vetoed it, and the Senate sustained his veto, so it didn't even come to us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Busy time up there. All righty. Town manager report.
I don't have one.
You are just wonderful. Next item, we have nothing on the consent agenda, so item one, under old business, the council to review and discuss traditional cable television franchise renewal. And Nick is here to give us some advice and guidance. Yes?
We could, yeah. Nick?
Yes.
You can stay there, but would you mind if I took Chief Dudas, Captain Dudas real quick?
Sure, absolutely.
I appreciate it, yeah. If you want to fire up and get that ready to rock, that'd be good. Thanks, Peter, for pointing that out, because he was in a blur in my vision, I didn't even see him over there. So we're going to move to item number four, under new business, just to help the captain go back home. So, good evening. The council is to consider the acceptance and expenditure of a donation in the amount of $5,000 from Digital Federal Credit Union to the Merrimack Police Department to be used to offset expenses for the PAC program, National Night Out, and benefit our community, pursuant to RSA 31:95B and Charter Article 8, Section 15.
Thank you for moving me up, first of all.
Item number four.
Yeah, back in August, we received a check from DCU. This is the fifth year in a row that they've sent a check. Back in 2014, they started off with a check of $2,500. This past August, they sent a check of $5,000 from the Public Relations Department down in Marlborough, Mass. And basically, they asked us to put it towards a worthwhile program that kind of benefits the community. And with that, we identified three programs, which is the PAC program, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, which is the hybrid of, you know, the program that we do at the, down at the middle school, and also National Night Out, and along with our open house. So hopefully, they'll accept that $5,000 donation and expenditures for that.
That's another, another great thing that they've been doing. It's really nice. Did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay. Anybody have any questions? No?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the town council accept and expend a donation in the amount of 5,000 from Digital Federal Credit Union to the Merrimack Police Department to be used to offset expenses for the PAC program, National Night Out, and benefit our community pursuant to RSA 31:95-B and Charter Article 8-15. And furthermore, that the town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign whatever documents are necessary to accept and expend. And furthermore, we give DCFU another plaque for another generous donation.
Second.
Motion by Council Boyd, second.
Did nobody get the second part of the motion?
Oh, there was a second part?
Then we give them another plaque for their donation.
No.
We already gave them one, is what I'm saying. We already gave them one.
But a profuse thank you, for sure.
Profuse thank you, absolutely.
Were you moving that from your motion?
Yeah, I was trying to be, trying to be facetious, council candidate.
All righty. Bill, would you like to speak further to your motion?
Nope, it speaks for itself.
Thank you, sir. No further discussion? I'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Obstant?
Just for the record, you know, this is the fifth year, and I totaled the money so far, it's $16,500 from DCU, so that's quite a bit of money in the last five years. Go towards our kids.
Yep. Now, that's spectacular.
Thank you. I'm so sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mike? All right, and so, because, Nick, could I, could I bear your forgiveness for one more? Unless you weren't planning on being here. All right, I would like to go to item number three, so that Sharon Hickey can leave these comfortable seats as well. All right, if, without objection, that is. So we're going to take item number three, under new business. The council is to consider the Four Seasons Homeowners Association request for a letter of support from the town of Merrimack to be included with the association's pre-proposal application for a watershed assistance grant to support local initiatives to restore impaired waters or protect high-quality waters. And Sharon, welcome, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. Appreciate being here. Good evening to all of you. So my name is Sharon Hickey. I'm a resident of Merrimack at Four Seasons, which is located on, off of South Babusick Lake Road, on the lake, on the shores of Babusick Lake. We take a lot of pride in our lake, and I have spearheaded a project, which has been embraced by our Board of Directors. By the way, we have 89 homes in our Homeowners Association. And we have a very severe continual annual erosion problem that creates pretty large gullies, the largest being maybe three feet wide, six inches deep, and that sand just ends up in the lake. We rake it out, we try to rake it out everywhere, every year, but we're, you know, 89 people that own homes there, and we do our best, but, you know, it falls short. So we have decided to apply to the New Hampshire DES for a 319 watershed assistance grant. We've done a lot of research regarding the watershed, the Babusick watershed plan. I want you to know that Four Seasons has a 20-year history of providing projects with the idea of reducing phosphorus load, reducing stormwater to the lake. Over the past 20 years, we've, with our own funds, regraded the parking lot, we've created a two-tier level, you know, it was on a slope, and we've created two tiers, where water, instead of rushing down into the lake, you know, is able to percolate into the ground, along with a partnership, a longstanding partnership that we have with the Babusick Lake Association. We've installed berms that run from north to south on the property. It's probably, you know, 100 feet. We've also installed inflation, excuse me, infiltration trenches. And this is all new to me. I, you know, up until four years ago, I had no idea what an infiltration trench was. So all of that work, while it's exemplary, exemplary, is uphill of the beach. And the beach is on a continual slope, and all of that work has, that has been done, falls short of about 50 feet between the last retaining wall and the beach. So what we would like to request from the watershed assistance grant are funds which would help us to build a perched beach. The perched beach, you may know, is, would create a level beach area, there would be a retaining wall constructed, I mean, without engineering, I don't know, you know, six to 10 feet from the water's edge. We're going to rely on engineers to help us provide guidance with plan design and so forth. The perched beach will stop stormwater from going into the lake and really kind of filling up the lake, which has gone through huge strides over the, over the past. We are on the verge of coming off the EPA impaired water list. So we're proud of that, we'd like to, we'd like to continue the momentum. I am personally working with Jeff Marco of the New Hampshire DES. He has been a huge help in filling out the grant. The grant is due next week, September 21st, and I believe, and Jeff believes, that we have a pretty decent shot. The other thing we're doing is, you know, we have to come up with 40% of the cost. And we really don't have a real firm idea on how much that will be, but we know it's going to be like around $20,000, we figure, for the 40% that the homeowners have to come up with for, you know, to meet the matching requirement. There, in our budget today, we have about 13 of that, and at our meeting in October, I'm proposing an increase to our Homeowners Association dues, which will more than cover the other piece. So I'm here tonight to ask you to consider a letter of support that I can provide with our grant. The grant application requires letters of support, which I already have one from Camp Young Judea, I already have one from the Babusick Lake Association, and I have several from our homeowners. I personally have written a letter of commitment. A letter of commitment kind of ranks a little bit higher than a letter of support. The letter of commitment not only explains our problem and details the solution, but also commits money. Everybody around the lake would, you know, want this. And, you know, the town has very valuable property on the Merrimack side of that lake. We want to preserve, I'm sure you want to preserve, the property value that, that is there. And it's in that spirit that I'm here this evening to basically ask for your support, and, you know, be able to provide me with a letter that I can submit alongside, alongside our grant. I have, if you're interested in looking, I'm not a photographer by any stretch of the imagination, but I do have some pictures, if you'd like to, I didn't bring enough for everybody, but I mean, there's a lot of pictures there, and you can feel free to pass them And I'd just like you to consider that.
Thank you, Sharon. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mrs. Hickey, thank you so much for-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Mrs. Hickey. Thank you so much for your presentation and for applying for this particular grant. This particular area has been a level of concern that I've had going back to 2012, when the Town of Merrimack was forced to deal with the EPA regarding our storm water permits and new, new requirements and new regulations that were potentially being imposed on us. And now we're in 2018, and we still don't know what that MS4 storm water permit is going to look like. So, the, the reason why I say that is the, one of the things that you talk about in your application is you talk about reducing phosphorus in your lake. And you alluded to how Babusick Lake is on the EPA impaired water list. This, this, as you allude to in your application, you know, the, the level of phosphorus accounts for 30% of the lake's total predicted phosphorus loading in the lake. And if they're able to get off that EPA impaired water list, that's one less thing we have to worry about as a community as it relates to our MS, MS4 permit. I reached out to Eileen today, and I asked her if she could either ask Kyle or Dawn to weigh, Dawn, Kyle Fox and Dawn Tormo from DPW to weigh in to confirm that this would make, would get, would reduce some, potentially reducing some of the burden that we may have as a, as a result of us being MS, quote unquote, MS4 compliant. And I believe, and Eileen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Eileen forwarded the email to all of us today. And Dawn affirmatively wrote that the, the application, the proposal should help with water quality issues that still remain on Babusick Lake. I would recommend that the Town Council support the Four Seasons Homeowners Association outline plan and provide them with a letter of support. And I followed up with Eileen to confirm with Dawn that this would, you know, reduce some of our potential burden that we may have in the future regarding MS4. And Dawn responded affirmatively. So, I think this is a great opportunity for us to provide a, a letter of support to the Four Seasons Homeowners Association while also at the same time begin to address, and commend them for addressing the, the level of phosphorus that has been impacting Babusick Lake. I think if we can get Babusick, like I said, and I apologize for being redundant, but if we can get Babusick Lake off the impaired water list, I think it's going to make our lives a little bit easier, and will make DPW's lives a little bit easier. So, if, if there's any hope, I deserve the right for people to, to speak, but I would actually like to make the motion that the Town Council write a letter of support from the Town of Merrimack on, on Town of Merrimack letterhead to be included with the Association's pre-proposal application for a watershed assistance grant through the Department of Environmental Services to support the initiative to restore impaired waters or protect high-quality waters as it relates to Babusick Lake.
Motion by Councilboy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Peter. Would you like to further discussion motion?
I, again, thank Mrs. Hickey and to the members of the Four Seasons Homeowners Association, the fact that they're willing to consider, you know, raising their condominium assessments to address this particular issue, on top of the fact that they pay taxes into the community. These taxes are what we're, we potentially, and, and we're looking at big, and we've talked about this in the past. I mean, this is a big-dollar ticket item that potentially could be impacting our community. So I'm grateful to you and the 89 homeowners for willing to consider, you know, raising your dues to address this particular problem and to have some capital to offset the grant monies to, to fix the problem. Well, not fix the problem, but, but address that issue that goes on at Babusick Lake. So, that's how I would close my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Bill. Any further discussion or comments? CNN will call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstain?
Perfect, I'll do a dance.
Should charge coming in the door the next time. Thank you very much for this. We appreciate it.
Pardon me? Draft language?
For the letter.
Well, I wasn't given any, but here's what I will do. I wrote my own letter of commitment. Now, the letter of commitment has monetary, you can disregard the monetary. This is what I wrote, and this is what I submitted to Jeff Marco at the state. And he said it looks, you know, for a letter of commitment. The only reason I'm, I'm going to suggest that is there's a paragraph in this letter that details our, the exact problem and the solution that we're recommending. And it's those two paragraphs that I would ask you to include, you know, turn your attention to and just forget all the stuff about, you know.
And Paul, when you work on that letter, can you put some type of language in there that reflects that we're an MS4 community to DES, to make them aware that this helps us? If you could. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickey.
Thank you very much.
You'll let him come out?
All right, Nick.
It's like the audience is clear.
All right, now, back in track, I think. Item number one under old business. And Nick is here to review and discuss the traditional cable television franchise renewal.
I'm here, I assure you. I don't know if it was something that, um...
You're supposed to be the expert on this stuff.
I don't want to blame the...
Paul will come out and fix that?
Merrimack Police Department. There you go. Sure. Thanks, Chris.
It's all good. Yeah, I wonder if that's settled down at all? That's incredible.
We're having an issue with this converter.
Thanks, Chris.
Just before we came.
Yeah, 40 homes in business. Last I saw, I don't know where it is now.
And I got a, a full... We're in business. Great. All right, thanks for your patience, guys. I just wanted to, I just, Nicholas LaValle, Town of Merrimack's Media Services Coordinator. Great to be here yet again. I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Mr. Noah Mendel for stopping by during public comment. Much of what he said was very true, and his enthusiasm is very much appreciated. So what we're talking about is our cable TV franchise renewal. And I would like to stress that this, this entire presentation is relative to traditional cable television, not internet services, and also a look towards the future of cable, traditional cable television. So what is our cable television franchise agreement? Well, it's a, it's an agreement that is non-exclusive. This document authorizes and permits the franchisee Comcast to construct, upgrade, install, operate, and maintain a cable television system within the Town of Merrimack. This is a 10-year agreement that was made in January 2009, and the end of the term is 2019. I also, I just want to stress again that this has to do with cable, traditional cable television. And Comcast owns all of the cable television infrastructure here in Merrimack. A question that came up during our discussion last month was how our cable television rates determined. Just want to make mention that the franchisee, which is Comcast, has control over the amount to bill per the Cable Act of 1984. Last time that we had this cable TV franchise renewal was back in 2008. And since then, consumers now have more options relative to how they view programming. 10 years ago, to watch your favorite shows, you'd rely on traditional cable television services. And now, viewers have the option to view shows in a number of different ways, through an internet connection. And this industry has drastically changed because of consumer trends and our viewing habits. Direct quote from a Forbes article published in 2018 was that "streaming platforms such as Netflix, Hulu, Amazon Prime Video, YouTube are growing rapidly at the expense of pay TV's losses." Looking at current highlights of our franchise agreement, traditional cable television services are available to all residents within the Town of Merrimack. Any Merrimack resident may request to have traditional cable television services brought to their home. Free basic traditional cable television services are available for municipal buildings, including police, fire, and schools. In our current franchise agreement, again, a customer service center is made available in a neighboring community. And then also, there are, there's a section relative to complaints, resolution, complaints, resolution procedures. Comcast receives a service request. Within 24 hours, it's expected there'll be a response time, and where possible, a resolution shall occur within 48 hours. If the franchising authority, which is the Town Council, determines it to be in the public interest, they may investigate multiple complaints. If there's a pattern of multiple unresolved complaints, the franchising authority, this Town Council, and the franchisee Comcast may discuss appropriate amendments to the franchise agreement. And again, this is relative to the cable television portion of any subscriber's bill. Additionally, the franchising authority may hold a performance evaluation hearing once during each year of the renewal franchise. The franchisee should be provided at least 30 days' notice of such hearing. These are highlights in the current franchise agreement, and I would recommend that these highlights be retained in a renewal. Additional items to consider in the renewal franchise, service availability. This was something that we talked about last month as well. Service availability, meaning if a subscriber is without service, and they would like to request service, in this current franchise agreement, the distance between the pole and the building, and the potential subscriber's home would have to be, the maximum would be up to 150 feet before there's a cost to that potential subscriber. We could negotiate an increase such as 250 feet. I would also suggest we include language to provide service to not only the current municipal and school buildings, police buildings, fire buildings, but also future municipal and school buildings.
I also?
Sure. Sure.
Are all of our municipal buildings covered, the dump and so on, or do they have anything down there?
I want to, I, I think they all have basic service right now. I know that in the past, there had been some issues. And also, if there were to be new construction, there's nothing listed in there for new construction. And that's why I had suggested that we should, we should negotiate that to be in place.
I agree. Thank you.
I'd also want to make the recommendation for a fourth public education and government channel, so that at least one of our channels or content could be included on Comcast's high-definition tier. Eileen's got her hand.
Oh, Eileen, I'm sorry. Jump right in.
Can we get the HDTV with Vaseline lens? You don't get that.
Yeah, it's not going to be the government channel.
Yeah. Oh, we don't, okay. We don't want that. Yeah, we don't, we definitely...
Makes us look better, is that what it is?
Yeah. It makes you look so much worse. Yeah, exactly.
Takes the glare off, is that what it is?
No, it's, it shows your pores and everything else.
I could also volunteer Chris Perez, our part-time media technician, to do your makeup.
Do your makeup. Excellent. Hey, Chris, excellent. He just went like this. Awesome.
Also, I, I don't... Also, I would suggest potentially, or asking for a potential senior citizen's discount. An example, Bedford recently went through this franchise renewal, and not in the franchise agreement itself, but there's two side letters that the, the Town of Bedford received, which is a promise to the town that they'd have $2 off a digital starter package. So it's something for senior citizens. And they also, just to backtrack a little bit, they also received a side letter. They'll be the first public access channel in the state to actually have a channel on the high-definition tier. It's expected that Manchester will follow. I actually have copies of the two side letters available, if you guys would like copies of that.
It's okay. Thank you, though, for copying.
Sure. And then, in addition to that, items to consider in the renewal franchise, franchise fees. Now, what are franchise fees? Franchise, franchise fees, currently the town receives 3.75% from gross annual revenues from traditional cable television subscribers. The Town Council has typically used these funds to cover the media division, our public education and government television channels, our, and our staff. This is per the Cable Act of 1984. Up to 5% can be requested. We could potentially expect a loss in revenue from franchise fees. As I mentioned in a few slides earlier, as more households are cutting their traditional cable television services and relying, relying on streaming content through the internet, the town does not receive revenue from internet services. Another question asked in our last discussion was, can the franchise agreement be less than 10 years? And the question is, does, the answer is, it doesn't have to be 10 years. However, my recommendation would be to have a 10-year agreement. And the reason being is, I feel that it would protect the consumer, specifically our viewers, in this change industry. I think an agreement today protects the consumers for tomorrow that expects to see our channels, our content streaming on our Merrimack TV website and YouTube channels. And I think it has more of a guarantee to be made available over the course of the next decade. Suggested timeline, we held a discussion in August at a Town Council meeting. There's this presentation here tonight. I would suggest that we post an open opportunity beginning September 14th through October 10th for residents to submit questions, concerns, and suggestions to the Town Council. We can put that on our website tomorrow. To send those comments to MerrimackTV@MerrimackNH.gov. I would suggest we schedule a public hearing in the next, for the next Town Council meeting. And the Town Council to finalize franchise agreement suggestions in October. Have legal counsel review those suggestions of yours during November. And for Comcast, present Comcast with the finalized franchise agreement from this Town Council in December, for an agreement to be made in January. Our next step, just as I mentioned, to open up a comment period online, schedule a public hearing, and allow residents to provide input regarding the new renewal franchise agreement. Invite Brian Christensen, who is the Comcast Senior Manager of Government and Regulatory Affairs, and other representatives from the cable company should also be invited to attend as well. I want to stress that public input, like Mr. Mendel's, is important, it's welcomed, and it's encouraged. This presentation could serve as a, as a guide as to what we can and can't have negotiated in our franchise agreement. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Thank you, Nick.
Can we have the lights back on, so I can see my notes?
Sure.
Thank you. There were a couple of other items when I did the comparison between what is the proposed contract for Merrimack as compared to, against a Bedford. So there are a couple of places where it varies. Like in our contract, it talks about having 30 dwelling units in order for them to actually bring a line in and establish cable service there. Bedford is doing 20. So that's maybe something we want to consider, since there's a lot of building going on over the next year, adding new house units or apartment units. So we want to make sure that the contract allows for them to get cable service, if in fact, it's under the 30-year unit. So I would propose going to 20. Also, for where there is underground, I'm sorry?
That would be included underneath the serviceability part of the contract.
Yeah, it falls under Section 5.
Yeah, serviceability.
Yeah. And also, they talk about the underground cable units. Again, there was a difference there. And I propose that we go to 25 versus 30 again there. On the next page, still in that same section, there's some work that needs to be done as far as completing the formula for the cable plant. Again, they talks about having 30 dwelling units per aerial or underground mile of aerial plant, and again, that's the 20. So just, that whole section needs to be switched over on the mileage. Also, they have something there regarding the timeframe, and that would be down in Section 5.5, as far as how they restore. And Bedford quotes RSA 236.9. I can write these all out for you too, Paul, if you're the one who's in charge of this. So I think we need to have some similar wording referencing that particular legislation. On Article 8, where we talked about the franchise fees, that was kind of interesting. Because, again, as you state, we have 3.75%. Bedford is running at the maximum of 5%. Now, the franchise fees, if you've been paying attention to your Comcast bill, that does not come out of the pocket of Comcast. That gets charged, yeah, to us, and the citizens pay.
It used to be higher, we lowered it.
It was 5%.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I don't know how much of the income is related to that, and how much we need that income, but that's always something that we can lower maybe even more and give some relief. But like I said, Bedford's doing 5%. The interesting part I found was that, and I'm sure you saw it as well, the $250,000 that Comcast gives the town of Bedford for their equipment maintenance as well, and we don't have anything in that section. We don't have anything comparable. We're not getting any money from Comcast for that.
We could negotiate for capital funds, and what Bedford uses those capital funds for is the build-out of their community TV studio.
Uh-huh.
As we have one here. We do have a reserve fund, and Bedford does not.
Okay.
So that's the difference there. There's, they, we've, we've been frugal when it comes to budgeting for this department, very frugal over these past 10 years. For a while, we were sort of saving that money in the event that maybe we did have to build a building. We used cable franchise fees to renovate this building that we're in, to renovate this meeting room, our studios, and our offices as well, so that we actually, we spent some of that money, but we've, we've saved quite a bit of money, whereas Bedford has spent theirs each year.
Yeah.
Is that? I mean, that just seems kind of odd, that because of the way we do our budgeting and business, and they choose to do it differently, they're getting rewarded for that by a quarter million dollars.
And we're not.
I'm sure that money gets passed on to their ratepayers. They're not, they're not giving that money out of their goodness of their heart.
Okay. All right, I misunderstood.
I'm guessing.
We don't know that, I think is.
But how bad?
Who knows anybody in Bedford? Okay, so, also, oh, I'm sorry.
So what I want to say is that they're, they're also getting 5%. So they're getting 5%, which means they're getting a big, much bigger chunk of money, and then they're getting another $250,000, and it'd be interesting to know what they're spending.
I'd like to know where it came from. And not to interrupt you, but when it comes to the franchise fee, for me, if we are starting to run short, not able to run our, our operations, then I would be interested in raising it. But for me, right now, I, I mean, unless I misunderstand, I'd rather not. I'm inclined to leave it where it is.
I agree.
So, yeah, because I didn't think we were even close.
Yeah.
But I understand, as you've suggested earlier and before, that, you know, it's going to thin out as time goes on because of people's habits and where they're going for their television and selling.
Right. Yeah, that 200, I'm sorry, 25,000 is coming under the section of peg access equipment, that's 7.4, for capital funding. So, yeah, they're getting a little bit, and there's a change there for their capital outlays.
Correct.
And then, the only other thing I noticed is that for the page that we just talked about, regarding where and what building should have cable access, we probably want to put a list there. We didn't have anything on the other one, so. I'm done, thanks.
Peter.
Actually, I thought, Barbara covered some things.
We're very good. Bill?
On Page 22. Nick, on Page 22, do we still have a TV studio at the high school?
We do not.
So that should be taken out of the agreement, don't you think?
Absolutely.
Okay. The other question, going back to Page 24.
And I should, I should, I should mention, not only should the TV studio be relocated here to Town Hall, that should be mentioned, but also our head end. I think that's almost more significant, is that our channel originates from this building.
So the, I apologize, Counsel, I have it. So really, the origination points really need to be written to be, to better reflect, which I'm presuming is Town Hall and the public library.
Town Hall.
Just, just Town Hall?
Yeah.
Okay.
Origination points for our three-peged channels.
Okay.
And to touch upon that, Bill, about the studio at the high school. And I don't know if I want to eliminate that, only because moving forward, and we have a meeting next week with the school board, maybe we get their input on what they see is, you know, going, moving forward in the future, do we leave that language in there at some point? I don't know, but, and kind of get their input. I'd like to hear their input on, you know, what, you know, do they see further cable services needed too?
Well, that's the advantage of having the future.
You're in there.
Huh?
That's the advantage of Nick's suggestion about having, and future municipal.
Future municipal.
That would cover that, which is.
Okay, but I'm just saying, maybe we.
No, but I think your point is well-taken.
Okay, thanks.
On Page, this is just more curiosity, on Page 15, Section 4.3, what is capetown? Parental-controlled capetown?
I'm pretty sure that that would have to do with the cable boxes themselves. There's a lot of, are you speaking, are you talking about the?
It's titled parental-controlled capetown. I've never heard.
I used to.
Kappa, C-A-P-A-town, T-O-W-N-E.
Page 15.
Page 15.
Franchise agreement.
I mean, it's, I'm just, just curious. Correct.
Yeah. Doesn't recognize it.
Told you.
It's a made-up word.
Must be false.
This is Page, this is 410. Section 4.3 on Page 15.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna assume that that's parental-controlled capability.
Okay.
That that's a typo. Because it says subscribers with the capability to control the reception of any channels being received on our television sets.
Okay.
So that's a typo.
On the current one, it's capacity.
On Page 16, Nick?
Okay.
Yes.
Is 15 days generally standard for service availability?
Service availability.
It says the franchisee shall make its cable system service available to all residents within 15 days of a request therefore.
I think I read capetown.
Was it the same in Bedford? Okay.
That's what I was just trying to pull up. Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, no, I try to compare the timelines and money.
I mean, 50, I mean, two weeks just seems, I mean, I understand scheduling and the whole, I mean, on Comcast part, scheduling the whole, just two weeks seems like a long time.
Cable withdrawal.
That's why, you know, cable withdrawal, good point. And then, the, really, the thing that kind of hit me hard, like a two-by-four across the side of the head, on Page 24, under Section C, excuse me, Section B, said franchise fee payments shall be made to the access provider on a quarterly basis. Why are we, why are we allowing Comcast to collect interest on a franchise fee that we're collecting before we, before we get, before we get our fees? Why are we allowing them to collect interest on that? Why are we not getting these payments on a monthly basis? I mean, we're, we're, we're putting money in Comcast's pocket. We shouldn't be doing that.
I agree, so.
You know, I, I would want monthly, and I would want monthly written there, and everywhere else where it says quarterly, it's monthly. You know, if, if, I've said my piece.
Peter.
Section D. Go ahead.
Just to touch on that, Bill. Paul, does it make more sense quarterly or monthly? Does it, is it more of a burden to do it monthly, or?
No, because we get the payments usually about 100 days. So the quarter ends, and we get them 15 days after quarter. So we're talking roughly $90,000, so about $30,000 a month is what the payment would be versus the 90 to 92,000 that we get.
So there's no, I guess, a hardship? Is it easier for the finance?
No, we can, no. It's just a check. It's, that's all it is, is just a check that we cash. So it's not a hardship.
Thanks.
And then, Section D, Nick, same page. And I, and I didn't understand this, and if anybody can educate me, I'd appreciate it. Says the franchisee shall not be liable for a total financial commitment pursuant to this renewal franchise in excess of 5% of its gross annual revenues, provided, however, that said 5% shall include any other fees or payments. What are they saying? I mean, I understand it's legal and it's there for purpose, but what, in layman's terms, what exactly are they saying? I mean, does it go back to?
Would you repeat that again, please?
It's on Page 24, it's, it's the entire Section D. Does this go back to your, your, your presentation, Nick? Where you talk about where we can't charge more than 5%? Because it reads the franchise, franchisee shall not be liable, this is, shall not be liable for a total financial commitment pursuant to this renewal franchise in excess of 5% of its gross annual revenues, provided, however, that said 5% shall include any other fees or payments required by applicable law. I don't understand what.
Is it meaning that their investment in the community, their expansion, or any of that?
I think what it's saying is, it's, it's, it's going to provide 5% of their gross annual revenues, and, and that's the cap. That's, that's how I read it, that's the cap, unless there's some other law that, that requires them to pay more. Maybe that's relative to them promising capital funds. But to me, I read that as 5% is the cap, and they shall not be expected to pay any more than that.
Just out of curiosity, it's interesting that Bedford says the cap is 5% and shall in no case include the peg access equipment required from Section 7.4, or any other fees or payments required by applicable law. So 5% plus.
Well, absolutely. I mean, whatever the best is, that's what we should at least be shooting for.
So they're doing the 5% plus.
Yeah. And ours says 5% and no more.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think, as we go through these hearings that you've recommended and so on, and I think that was all a good idea, I would be interested, you had said Mr. Mendel's ideas were worthy, I'd be interested in how that plays in, if it is of any benefit to the town and so on. He was pretty adamant about it, and, and so, you know, I'd be interested in hearing what those things were and so on.
Absolutely. And I think, I think public, as I said during the presentation, public comment is encouraged, it is welcome. And Mr. Mendel, I had spoken with him in the past, and he's, he's obviously very passionate and enthusiastic about what the potential with this, with this renewal is. But he, some of the other points that he made when he was, when he was speaking was that, he pointed out, there's, there's really only so much that we, that we can do.
Right.
And that's not to discourage us from getting the things that we want. There are things that we know we want. We would love to have a senior citizens discount. We'd love to see our channels in HD, and we want to continue providing these public education and government resources to the community. And obviously, the service availability, we want to make sure that if people are building a new home, that they are going to be able to have cable run to their house, and it's not going to cost them any more than it would be if someone had been here for the past 10 or 15 years. So, you know, just hearing some of his thoughts tonight was great, and I hope that the public sees this presentation, hope they're made aware of this. But I do need to stress, and we stressed this throughout the entire presentation, this is only relative to traditional cable television services here in Merrimack. And I know it gets confusing because we also rely on Comcast for internet service. This is not relative to the services they provide relative to the internet. Now, the good news of that is that there is competition now to view content. There is competition to view television programs, and that's through a wireless connection from your cell phone provider. Comcast knows this. They see the competition, and they've changed their, the way that they bill their cable TV. They changed the way they offer their services. There is more competition now. So those are just things to be mindful of when the public does recognize that we are renewing a cable television franchise.
Real quickly, what, you brought that up is where I would like to go, if not tonight, instead of, at another meeting sooner than later, is that conversation was about the town setting up a, I don't know if it was broadband or whatever, access, internet access to the community. And what I'm hoping that the council will agree to do is have a group put together, five people, whatever, to do all that research, to dig into the communities who have already done that, find out how they finance the whole thing. Because I believe that if we had that opportunity for our community, that would change Comcast too in a little bit. Because I do feel trapped by them. I recognize it's not a monopoly, but it really is. And so I, you know, so if we can do that, then I think they'd be stepping to the plate a little bit more, in a stronger fashion, to deal with their pricing and everything else about it. But, so, go ahead, Tom.
No, just my two cents on the franchise fee. I mean, I'd actually want to see that a little lower, to be honest with you, because it's just, you know, even go down like a 2% franchise fee, because then that's less the taxpayers have to pay. And I get it, we offset it sometimes with the, with the, towards the taxes at the end of the year, but that's only our portion of the taxes. You still have the school portion of the taxes. So I would like to see that too. I'd like to see it go down even 2% instead of from 3.75.
I just, I just want to point out that if you were to reduce the cable franchise fee, if you were to reduce the amount of money that Merrimack receives from cable subscribers, there could potentially come a day when the services that we provide here with cable television will impact property taxes, and it will be significantly greater than the impact of your cable bill now.
I just want to follow up on, if you have a mind.
I'll just, I'll do an analysis for you.
Thank you, that would be good.
Okay, so I'll bring that to you. Yeah, to know what the impact would be.
Yeah, thanks, Eileen. Is it Bill?
That's what I was going to say. Can you do an analysis, 3%, 2%? So that we could see what the numbers are. Thank you.
All right.
I was just going to make a comment that the gentleman seemed to imply. I was just going to make a comment that the gentleman seemed to imply that we didn't allow other people in this competition against Comcast, and we just want to, is that the implication, anybody else got from them? So that has to be corrected again, that even though essentially it is a monopoly, it's not a sole proprietorship. We can have other cables or other franchises come in, it's just that we can't get someone in, and they own the wires, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, that's the bottom line, they'd have to-
And Mr. Mendel brought that up, that if he had a hundred million dollars, then he would start his own cable company. You know, I don't know what it would cost to start a cable company, but it would be expensive, because you would have to run those cables and, and provide that infrastructure.
Just to follow up on, we're going to have the public submit comments or questions or whatever. Is there a process for intake on those and tabulation of those?
Well, if we have them submitted via email from, to MerrimackTV@MerrimackNH.gov, the, those emails, you know, would be available under the right to know law.
That's what I, I was getting at, is, you know, they need to know where to send them, and also, the contract allows us to have, to at least have some kind of remediation if we're getting complaints by that. I get a sense that we've never set up a process or told the public that they have the right to, you know, come to us to be able to try to resolve issues for them with Comcast. So I think we need to set up a process for that, as well as advertise that that process is available.
Well, I think also, we'll be taking the suggestions, comments, they can mail them into, to the town manager's office, because not everybody likes to write everything down in email. Some people like to write it out in a letter. So if they want to, we'll put it up on the website, that they can also send it to the town manager's office via snail mail.
Yep. I think if everybody's in agreement with Nick's suggestions as far as our, our next steps, if you will, as he noted, we should do that and have timeframes for those meetings, or, or the, you know, public input, you know, periods or whatever, so we can have that. But, did anybody have anything further than that?
Looking for a motion to affirm the timeline that Nick is promoting-
That would be good.
With the addition of having them under bullet number three. Feel free to mail their suggestions into the town manager's office at six Babusick Lake Road. And that can be posted on the website as well, posted on TV, whatever, however you were planning to post this, make sure that they can email it, or they can send it in to the town manager's office.
Town website, physical mailing address, and email address.
And also, they could call in, I guess, and leave a comment with town manager's office. And that, so, so in moving that timeline, we would affirm the public hearing for the September twenty-seventh meeting, and inviting, as you said on the second page, inviting Comcast to attend as well.
Sure.
That's the motion.
Just one comment, just actually, Nick, this presentation here, can we get it on the town website? Can you also put it on the cable channel?
Absolutely.
I, I think that that's important for people to see.
What I could do is, I could actually take the presentation separately and, and play that on the channel.
Yeah, that'd be, I think that'd be informative for the folks. And even on the website, a document for them.
Be happy to make a televised version of it, for sure. Thanks, Eileen.
And then maybe even add a line in here that says that Comcast is, you know, not the only one allowed in town, know what I'm saying? That the reason we have Comcast is that they're, they're just a sole, uh, yeah, requesting franchise. They, they own all the infrastructure, so anybody else comes in town, they're going to have to lease it from them, or rewire it.
Right, but, but I, I still would like to have an RFP go out.
You want an RFP to go out?
I, I think, I think so, and if nobody responds, then nobody responds, but at least I know that, and am able to tell people that.
Okay, so, in terms of timing, your timeframe, how does that all change everything?
Well, it shouldn't change anything at all, because the, you know, the franchise agreement will be what they're working toward, I suppose, so maybe, maybe that should go out after we've come up with what we want for a franch- you know, franchise agreement, but otherwise, they would have to follow the same, I'm saying this without absolutely knowing, I suspect they have to follow the same franchise agreement if somebody else were to come into town. I don't think they're going to have a separate franchise agreement, will they? No. So, so once that's put together, then we can ask people to come in and do it, so maybe it is better to wait until we have something solid.
Yes, Nicholas? Yes? Okay, so, can I, can you just make a motion to go out to bid?
This is our motion on the fourth. Yes, we have to do Tom's, sorry about that, he pulled me right in, I was ready to do it. So the motion was made by Tom, Peter, Tom, second. All right, is there any further discussion on that? I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. Do you want me to, do you want me to make the motion?
I move that we request town manager to go out to bid for any potential other future cable TV franchisees via, via a RFP, request for proposal.
Seconded. Qualifications you suggest?
Proposal on qualifications.
Request for qualification?
It would have to be for qualifications, because if somebody is, they can give us whatever price they want, but if they don't have the qualifications, it doesn't matter.
Okay.
So qualifications.
Okay.
RFQ, how about that?
And Pete, anyway, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Motion by Tom Cannon, it's said by Nancy. I'll speak to Tom's motion. I just, I, I don't know that we'll get anything back, we have tried this once before, but it was years ago. And so I just like the proposal go forward, so I know that I've asked the question, or we've asked the question, so. I appreciate your support of Tom's motion.
Me too.
Is there any further discussion on it? I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. Thank you, I appreciate that. Then my, my last thing, oh, go ahead.
That will happen after the council review of the franchise agreement, when everything's said and done. So it's going to happen in the December timeframe.
Very good, thank you, Paul. Should I set up a separate agenda item for my request to have committee assign? Then I would like, I will do that for the next meeting, if there's room. All right. Does anybody, anybody have anything further for Nicholas?
Was there a vote for a public hearing on the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, as part of the timeline affirmation.
Okay.
Yep. So your suggestions have been agreed to.
And to invite Comcast.
Sure.
You going to handle that for us, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Absolutely.
All right, Nick.
In conjunction with town manager's.
Thank you very much. Excellent.
Or your proxy, yeah.
All right, committee, we'll move on to item number one on our new business, committee appointments, the council to consider appointing Stephen Perkins as a full-time member of the conservation commission pursuant to charter article four, section eight, eight.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilboy, seconded by Peter. Tom, would you like to?
I, I will say that we did interview Stephen Perkins, he was, he's got a lot of interest and, and sounded like he would be a tremendous asset to the conservation commission. I don't know, Peter, if you want to add anything?
No, he had quite an impressive resume, and I, and I agree with Tom, I, I think based upon conversation, he's going to be a great member.
Excellent, thank you. Bill, did you want to speak to that?
Nope.
Nope, all right. Very good, if no further discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor of appointing Stephen Perkins as a full-time member of the conservation commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, seven zero zero. Thank you. Item number two, under new business, the council consider the nomination to appoint James Taylor as a member of the Sohegan River Local Advisory Committee.
Salute.
Second.
I know I've never called him James, yeah, it is, I've never called him James before, but it was written as James, I thought I'd be formal about it. And, Paul had pointed out earlier that for this appointment, it's not necessary to be a resident of Merrimack, because Jim doesn't live in town, but his, his value, I think, is great for that, knowing the business he had just retired from, so. So, if anybody would like to make a motion?
I did.
You did?
Seconded.
I forgot. Is it ten o'clock? Oh, my gosh, all right. On a motion by Tom Cannon, and seconded by Barbara, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstained, seven zero zero, thank you very much. Okay, then, item number five, under new business, is a, our discussion about our joint town council school board meeting coming up on the twentieth. And I wanted to make sure everybody knew that that was the date, and that that was a good date. And I just, well, I was, yeah, I'm looking for input as far as agenda items, and- Peter.
Welcome back, Connor, reference.
Very good, yes.
No, Mr. Chairman, I, I think one of the things, obviously, the skateboard park. But I think that there's still the issue of, and we, at Parks and Rec, I've talked about it, ball fields is still a topic that we, I know we talked about it at the last meeting, the need for ball fields and locations and so forth, so I'd like to have that possibly be on the agenda. That'd be nice to discuss, because I know we, it was on the Parks and Rec agenda over the course of the year. So locating it, I know we talked about at one point, the, the field off of Wright Ave and so forth, the different conversations we had at the last school board, town council meeting, so.
Very good. Bill?
Dovetailing off of Council Albert's comment regarding ball fields, back in two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen, Tim Tenave did a presentation of available properties that could be used for ball fields, and there was a part in discussed ad nauseam at the joint meeting between the school board and the town council, and I'm wondering whether, because it was included in our packet at that time, I'm wondering if that report can be resurrected, included in the packet that we're going to be getting for the meeting with the school board.
I imagine so.
I'm, I'm confused, I'm sorry. What, I understand the ball field, I mean, the fields, but why are we involved with the school on it?
Talking about the report. We're having a joint meeting.
No, no, I'm talking about, but I mean, there are fields, are we asking that some of the school fields be used?
Well, I, I think, yeah, I think that, I, I think that they were, we were trying to come to at one point, when I, originally, a year ago, got on the Parks and Rec, that was one of the topics that they brought to me. And I think that there was a thought process of, hey, can we get, get use out of these fields? If the school identifies them, we, MYA can use them as well.
Gotcha, okay, now I see the connection, okay. Because, I mean, if it was just, I do remember Tim Tenave, I honestly don't remember school, I believe you, I just don't remember it. But I remember him doing an extensive study and talking about potential sites for fields and-
Correct.
The need and that kind of thing. I just- Oh, yeah, to buy, but, you know, all of those things. And the only thing was the availability of some of the school fields to use, and at that point, it was, I think it was dropped, not responded to, because they were concerned about the, maintaining the quality of their fields. So I'm not saying it's not worth discussing, but I wanted to verify that that's what you're talking about.
But that report has a complete inventory of everything, not just, not just what we were looking at, but also things that were already in use, which is why I think if we're going to have that conversation, it would be good to resurrect that report, so that Council Healy and Council, well, MYA guy over here probably knows everything, but still, for, for Council Thornton's benefit, that they have access to that report, because I think Tim did a good job putting it together, to be perfectly honest.
He did.
So.
Peter, are we talking the new field, new fields with the school, or are we talking their current fields? Because, I don't know, Council Thornton might help me, I think the only field that is not being utilized is the high school football field. I think all other fields with the school are being utilized for the MYA, except for the high school football field.
That's correct.
And that is because they don't want to ruin that, because it takes a beating in the four weeks. That the season's so short for football, it just chews it all up.
This is, this was for new fields, and this was for-
They don't have any new fields.
Excuse me?
They don't have any new fields.
Land for the-
No, new land for new fields, I'm sorry.
The school doesn't have any land for new fields.
They were, they, they were talking about, I can't remember the street, South Babusick Lake Road intersection.
Yeah, off to the right.
They were talking there, that's-
And there was research-
Out of view of this Timmons property.
There was, and it was researched, and that property up there, off of, up on the lake road by South Lake Road, was not conducive to ball fields, the way-
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, that, we found, that was determined last year.
Yeah, I think, Tom, you know more than any of us about it, because you were intricately involved in that.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and it's, and it is for new fields, and because they have land. And that's why we went, when I was with MYA, that's why we went to the school, because they have a lot of land, and it to- So, we're using their fields, and then, you know, then what we talked about too, is it'd be nice if we had an artificial field. Because then, you know, kind of like, I don't like talking about Bedford, but they have their high school field, which is turf, and the programs paid into that, so.
Hence they got to get to the turf field.
So a lot of their town, you know, in the Bulldogs, everyone uses the town, and the school both use that field. Because everyone put money, like the, their equivalent to the MYA put in money, everyone put in money, and that's why it's a joint thing. So that one field, that one turf field-
Can be used by everybody.
Can be used for multiple sports, and it's not going to get ruined.
Actually, the school district planning committee had looked extensively into that, and so the numbers are all there to be seen. They just have to decide what it fits into budget.
And I think that's what we have to look at, and ask them, where we are with that too, because the turf would be, it'd be nice for our programs, and obviously their programs as well, because they have a soccer team that doesn't even have a home team, have a home field.
That's right, they have to go somewhere else.
They go to GPS in Bedford, yeah.
I think, I think the school is definitely looking at that for the CIP, whether it's in this year's budget or next year's budget.
Oh, I didn't know, is that so?
Because they, because when they redid the track and everything, I think they were looking, they're looking at that as well. And I don't know where it stands, it might be clobbered now, but they're, they're definitely looking at that.
Yeah, very good. All right. Has, I don't know, anybody, Peter, I'm sorry.
Aye, are we done, so we'll put that on the agenda, I guess?
We'll put that on the agenda at this point?
Yes.
Okay, and there's, being on the conservation commission is another item I'd like to possibly discuss, is we've talked about the trails from Wildcat Falls, and you've got the footbridge at Merrill's Marauder Bridge, and, and I know that we're, we're going to be building that path that's going to go under the Chamberlain Bridge. Eventually, we're touching, that, that it should connect behind, along the river, along the high school property. So I think a conversation maybe should be had at this meeting to start the discussion of either, you know, maybe with their help, understanding the value of that property, and, and maybe they can help us improve that trail, or something to that effect, because I know that the cross-country team cuts through that way and uses Wildcat Falls to run in, so, could be a mutual, mutually agreeable situation, and it could kind of help us, maybe there's a, a leg of that going right down by the high school, maybe we could work together on that.
I, I, I know that that's, it's in funding, you know, it's, it's planned on right now, any of us remember, we talked about.
But it doesn't go-
I think it goes all the way to the bridge, ultimately.
It does go, I thought, okay.
Yep, I'm pretty sure. And then, and so that'll be inclusive, and also, I, I'm imagining, and I probably wasn't on the town senate committee when the conversation was had way back in the beginning, but I, I'm suspecting they talked to the school district about traversing through that way. I might be wrong, but I, knowing Nelson and everything, I'm-
So should we discuss it at all, then? You know, talk to them to refresh their memories, or, I don't know, have any discussion, is, hey, this is what's happening, this is coming up.
I think we could, we could, that's a possibility. Thanks.
I'd keep Pete's idea on there, about the, the media room, also, what they want to do with the media room for the cable.
They don't have one at the moment.
Whatever, that's in our franchise agreement. Or whatever, that's in a franchise agreement. Do they have a room there still?
I don't know.
They don't, was it all gone?
No, it's moved all over here, right?
Yeah, I think that room's been turned into other uses.
What's that?
I'm fairly certain that room has been put into other uses.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right, I didn't know.
I, I'd just still be, I think there's a topic, though, to say, moving forward, and I know it's already, as Nancy said, it's already sort of addressed in the contract about, well, we'd like to have it, about future growth.
But express their interest when you bring it up to them.
But I'd like to also know the, their opinion of what their cable, quality cable, if they have any issues, so.
Yeah, that's a good idea. All right. Is there something they would like in the contract? Is it applicable at all?
Right, and then over on the, the one issue, the only issue that I imagined in the first place was the skate park, and I'd like to, you know, hear from them what they, what their desires are, you know, so that we can work up a maintenance agreement, or an MOU, or something to that effect, to, to cover those bases. So that discussion will be had that night for sure. No water, though.
Oh. I really, I was just bringing that up.
No water.
So...
The water discussion, the last time, we had a joint meeting, went on for, I think, over an hour.
Every one of these discussions, unless you hone them down to what it is that you want to, what you're trying to find out, they're, they'll all go on.
Yeah, seven is bad enough, now we got 12 together who all want to talk, it's a... It's, it's just two more in the council meeting, it goes...
I just hope they have the school board ready for football on Friday night. I had to throw that out.
So, this is, this is just something, I know that you have discussed it, certainly at this last, at this last retreat that you had, about the fact that the grant for the school resource officer is coming up, I believe it's next year, and I, I, I hope, this is, I, you know, it's really not my place, but I will, I hope that we don't go down the road that a lot of other communities go down, that all throughout the state about fighting back and forth about whether, who's paying for the school resource officer. I don't think it's necessary to go through all that, you know?
It's ours.
So I just, I think...
I believe it's ours.
No, I do, I do, I, I do, and I, and it's coming out of the same pocket, right? So I just think that it would be a nice idea for, for you, if you, if you agree to, you know, put it on there and, and say to them, hey, listen, we...
When the time...
When the time comes, this is what our intention is. Because I, as I said, I've seen it all, you see it all over the state, you're, you know, back and forth and back, and we're paying, you're paying, we'll pay half, this, you know, we're eliminating it, and it's, it's just not necessary. I think everybody knows that both our school resource officers are of great value, and, and the fact that we want to keep them as police officers as well, under the auspices of the police department, is very important, so I just, I, I just think we should put that one right to bed, in my opinion.
You mean being proactive?
Proactive.
Ooh.
Right?
We don't know what to do with that.
All right.
Is that the consensus of the group, curiosity wise?
Yes.
I would like to be able to do that.
Oh, as far as the officer, it's been mine from the beginning of it, when we started using resource officers.
If that's true, then, yeah, we should. Absolutely. If that's the consensus of the group.
Somebody's not on. Somebody's, Barbara has a question. Oh, Barbara?
Yeah. No, I, I agree, because not only does it take away the bickering and trying to figure out who owns that FTE, we own the FTE, you know, and it stays under the purview of the police chief, and for training purposes and, you know, whatever, you know, that takes care of that whole thing, and it doesn't get messy with it being off, you know, in another organization, so.
All right. Seems like a consensus. That's the only thing I've heard anyhow, so.
That's a good idea.
All right. Bill?
I also think it's appropriate to get feedback from them to see how they feel, or let me rephrase that, what they feel the future is for Dallas going into their schools to do...
I think they feudalize them, haven't they?
Oh, they use gunning to sniff.
Oh, yeah.
We're into Dallas now, Dallas is our new dog.
I didn't know they would differentiate between canines, I just assumed that they had embraced the policy. I, you know, I, but...
I'm just saying, you know, it, it was a new, it was a new idea for them last year, and I would certainly, for me, enjoy hearing some feedback as to whether they felt there was value in it or not, and whether they're going to continue to utilize the dog as part of their security program at this high school.
Have that conversation, I...
I know that that's town council business, but...
Yeah, I was going to say, that's school business, not town council. With the police chief, by person. I think it's the school discussion, the school business, I'm not sure what part of the discussion is needed for the town council regarding the dog. We may have a philosophical opinion, but that's individual.
I'm talking about philosophical opinion aside, I mean, the, the, the dog is, the dog is, the dog is an employee of the town.
But as a...
The dog is an employee of the town.
Well, so, but whether to utilize that sort of, is a discussion, the town council has nothing to say about it. That's all.
And I'd rather avoid the conversation, because I appreciate that they did...
I know, I just, I personally agree with you, yeah.
That's, that's where I am.
And, and I don't disagree with both your opinions, I just would like to, you know, that was a trial run for them last year, after several years of debating, and I just would be curious to know how they've, how they felt about it, that's all. If you don't think it's pertinent, then, fine, it's not pertinent.
I'm going to be...
Not as a town council, it's not...
Great, I'm going to be speaking with Shannon, so I'll, we'll touch those things.
I, I agree, I don't, I don't think it's pertinent, I would think that it's a great question if you showed up at a school board meeting as a parent or a taxpayer and wanted to ask them to get their input, but I, I, I just don't think it's needed for this meeting.
All right. I think we're pretty good, we have a bigger pile than I anticipated, so I'll be meeting with Shannon, when I get that, I'll, I'll let you know, and, and then we'll put that together.
That's next week, right?
Yeah, it's next, what day is it?
Next Thursday?
Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Yes, yeah, yeah. All right.
Can I just clarify, I, I'd like to have something clarified for me, so when we put the, the agenda, I, I understand what it is that we're talking about, and it's, it's not just like an overly broad topic, so are we talk, so are we talking about fields, we're talking about new, potential new fields, okay? So we'll be talking about it from a perspective of the school district's need, and what else?
I'm, I'm imagining the, the properties that were spoken to...
Oh, that they own?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I don't want to put any words in anybody's mouth, but that's what I was, that's what I thought I'd heard.
Okay, so, because I need to know, I, I need to be, to prepare, and if we're talking to them about their, about their own school land, I need to go get information about what land they have.
Yeah, well, I'm going to, you know, I want to...
You're, you look puzzled.
I'm always puzzled.
Me, too.
I, I'm going to see, you know, when I speak with, when we speak with Shannon, I, I'm hoping to...
I don't understand, I, I just don't under, I, okay, I just don't understand.
That's what I was trying to express.
What?
Right.
That you're confused about so much.
Oh, she's confused as well, so.
But I look, I look, I'm just confused.
Yeah, well, I have to put this thing together, and...
Right, so, I mean, I, what, is that what you were thinking, Peter?
I just know it was a topic of discussion at the last joint meeting, and there was, there was, I think, left that, you know, well, we're going to look into it, let's look into it, it's, and I know it was on the Parks and Rec agenda at one point, so, you know, I'm kind of curious to follow up on it, if it's a non-issue with them, if they're, if they have, if they're happy with the situation with the field, and we don't have any concerns, you know, I can, I'll reach out to the Parks and Rec committee again to find out, in particular, Rick Grenier, and, go ahead.
I, I think, I'm, I'm not expressing myself right, I just wanted to know, I, I'm not saying that there isn't a need, I'm just saying that I don't know what our discussion will be with the school board, except for the need.
What you need to get ready.
Yeah, I don't know what I need to get ready, so, am I supposed, do you want me to get Tim's presentation, or do you want me to get, I'm not really...
I, I don't envision, it wasn't a real in-depth conversation last year, I'm curious to see if it is a concern with them still, and I'd like to, you know...
And, and their concern was they didn't have enough fields?
Yeah, I think that we talked about, Tom mentioned the soccer field, the soccer team and stuff, and, and it was a concern, can it be multi-use, and can we work, you know?
Yeah, well, we always look for rectangular fields, and we needed the space to do the rectangular fields. Now with all this building coming into town, with these 60-something homes, you know, coming in Merrimack and these apartments, there's going to be a lot more kids.
Two sixty.
There's going to be a lot, there's going to be a lot more fields that we're going to need, and so, and that rectangular was the biggest thing, because then rectangle can do soccer, you can do field.
But, I, I mean, I, I don't envision unless somebody else, anybody to come in with research or any paperwork or anything on it.
I think I have something on it, so...
Huh?
Let me look, because I think I have, because I, I know where all the spots were and stuff like that, and I think I have...
Yeah, and Bill mentioned something about Tim Tenave's presentation, if that can be resurrected, so.
Right, but on those fields, I guess, for ours, what we might be looking for is what the school district is thinking to do, because we have a great use for it through the youth programs and everything else, but we already know what properties we have through that report that Tim put together, and we just have to decide at budget time if it's something we think we should start, you know, looking toward, because we do have properties that can be used.
Yeah, but I've seen the school properties that they were talking about as well.
Well, that's why I'm wondering, is should that be the topic for that joint meeting, on our side? Is that what we're looking for, information from them, on whether they have properties that would be available, are they planning on developing them? I, I'm not sure.
Well, I think just the questions we're going to ask.
How about this, how about I assign my friend over here to get his stuff on having to do with the school properties, and then we'll get Tim's stuff, and then we'll find out what we have, and then we'll put something together.
Let's do that.
How about that?
That'll be great.
Sounds good.
Are, are you relatively all set for the other items?
Uh, what other items?
That means yes.
Yeah.
All right. Very good. Is there anything further? Nope, all right, move on to Paul's review of the MS 434 revenue report.
The pleasure of the council, I can make this really quick, I would like, yeah, I'd like the council to confirm that during the budget season, they wanted to put $450,000 to offset the tax rate out of undesignated fund balance. It's at, still the wishes of the council, and if it is, I need a vote, so I can file the 434 with the RA to kick off the tax setting process.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Tom Thornton. Is that motion clear enough for you, Paul?
Clear enough to make.
And what's, what's the effect on the tax rate, Paul?
Need to check a vote.
Yep.
Change it or not?
Estimated to be $5.10.
With that incorporated.
With that incorporated into it.
Okay, any further discussion on that? You, you noticed when you walked in, even though you sat right next to me, did you, you're clear on the motion and everything?
Yeah.
Very good. No further discussion, I'll call a question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes from the town council meetings on June 20th, 2018, the facilitation report from our goal's setting day, that was tabled from August 16th, if it was tabled, we have to remove it from the table.
I'd like to move the following...
Did you want to remove it from the table?
No.
You can't bring it up from the table.
You can't bring it up.
Oh, well, I'd like to, I'd like to do that, please.
Okay.
I'd like to remove it from the table, apparently, for discussion this evening.
Okay. Moved by Nancy, I guess, the second, from Tom Thornton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay, seven zero zero. Nancy?
I would like to ask for, oh, go ahead, see, now I'm all befuddled now. Prove the minutes with the following corrections. You'll notice that the pages are not numbered, so it's going to be a little, I will identify by the top wastewater, that's the page that has wastewater at the top, but the discussion is Watson Park, the third bullet point. Sports should be put in before fields. Town historical donation for Mr. Watson did not want sport fields. Wanted an open park for spontaneous activities, to pitch play, frisbee, et cetera. Sports fields would go against Mr. Watson's intentions, so I just wanted to have that explanatory.
That's correct. Right. Is sports sufficient, or, I mean, his, his original desire was...
Okay, athletic fields, that's, that's even better, athletic fields.
His original statement was organized sports, so football teams and baseball teams and stuff like that would be, would not be put there.
So organized sports fields, is that what you're saying?
What I can do, if you would...
That's how he phrased it when he was coming before the council back then.
What I, what I can do is I can actually get that agreement and...
Use that as a deterrent.
Use that for a page, for a page, is that okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I thought it should be explanatory.
All right.
Under Boissaman Park, and Pete, maybe you want to be able to comment on here, Council Albert asked if town could get rid of most of the cabins and restore it to natural state. I thought you said like the cabins that weren't any good, not just take them all down.
I won't, editorial.
I mean, it sounds like, get rid of the cabins and restore...
Just the cabins that aren't being used.
Right, so, so it's a little bit more explanatory than, you know...
Does it take the cabins?
No, I thought that's what you, I thought that's what you had said, and I think...
I did, too. It doesn't read that way.
I know that they use some of those, they legitimately need those for storage and stuff, but, I mean, what, no use in taking those down, but there are some that I think we constantly throw maintenance into, and over the years, and...
I just wanted you to get accurate credit, because it sounds off.
Thank you, Councilor Henry.
So, the cabin's not being used, perhaps.
Do you mind me interrupting? So, are you going to see if you can talk to the Parks and Recreation Committee to find out what they, you guys collectively would like to do with the, the buildings, or is there something I should be doing? Should I be going and getting a recommendation from either Kyle on the structures themselves and maintenance information, or from Matt? I just don't want to drop the ball there, I...
No, and Eileen, I don't believe you have, I think, I mean, it came up, Matt talked about in the Parks and Rec, the amount of work we put into some of those old cabins, and they, they get used once in a while, and I know that they use some of them, the kids stay in some of them, they're in the camp, they use, you know, if it's raining The kids stay in some of them, they're in the camp, they use, you know, if it's raining or something. But I just, I look at the amount of money that we spend on some of them and think, you know, go to better places.
Okay. So, what I, what I actually mean is that I would like to know if you would like me to make recommendations to your committee about which buildings should come down, or whether you, as a committee, are going to do that. I just, I don't want the, the, I know we're getting off track from the, from the minutes, but I just want to, I, while we're here, right, I just wanted to be clear and make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing.
No, you are. And, and you know what? I can bring that up in further discussion at Parks and Rec.
Okay.
Thank you.
The last thing on the page, that's that Stormwater MS 4. The point I'm looking at is employee recognition. It wasn't very clear. What I would like to have it say is discussion ensued about other types of employee recognition, including employees picking out their own gifts from catalog based upon years of service, no tax implications. So, those are the specific ones. I do want to make a general statement that I think they were lacking. I think the highlighted points were fine, but they should have been a little bit more neat in the summary in terms of reflecting discussion that we had.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's only the comment I want.
Okay.
Yeah, just a little bit more detail. I mean, it's, you know, for their, I mean, we talked for, for what, eight hours, whatever it was? And although it probably summarized in this, I think there was a lot more than what's here.
Well, just your last one.
They put on the wall.
Right, no, the, the last thing, the last thing you brought up, the employee recognition, it's because somebody had suggested you can have, they have catalogs with all these different things, and people would be happy. So, I get it. I agree with you.
Just a little bit more. Okay, and that's all.
All right. Any problem?
Question.
Yes.
What wasn't clear to me in this document were the takeaways. So, you know, I can, I can kind of surmise that there are some takeaways based on some of the statements. But do we want to, since we paid to have this done, do we want to go over that or have someone go over it and figure out what the takeaways were and what the status of those takeaways are? Because some of them may have been resolved already.
We, we didn't pay for them. We don't pay for it.
Oh, okay. I mean.
But what you're saying is valid, for sure.
Yeah. Because during the discussions.
Do you mean tasks?
Huh?
Do you mean tasks?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we spent all day, so we might as well at least understand what those are and then resolve them.
Yep. Very good. Anything more? See no other changes? Paul?
I would suggest we put these back on the table again until we can get them to go back and summarize the task in each area to make sure those tasks are what you agree to.
So, they can. So, what you're suggesting, send these back for more information?
More information. Get them to give us ta, what they, what they feel the tasks were per item.
We were there, so Paul and I will actually do it. Because we, we're, we're here, this is our town, we, they go from town to town. We know what we talked about, and we'll, we know what the, the tasks were. So, we'll, we'll fill in the meat and then have them give it back to us.
Do we need to table these? Or just have an augmented addendum later?
No. I just like the whole thing to be clear. Yeah. I just like the whole thing to be clear.
Yep.
Okay.
And, if I may, I just, I looked at them, and I thought to myself, how are we ever going to measure what we see, what we did? Because there's nothing in here to do.
Right.
Except for generalized kind of keep up this and continue that kind of thing. So, I totally agree with you.
So, I'll withdraw my motion. Is that what you're suggesting?
Did you move to accept or just move to take it off the table?
Well, I had already said move to accept with corrections.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm withdrawing that motion.
That would be, that would be, make it easier.
You had seconded, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, you can withdraw as well?
Yep.
So, I will again make a motion to continue tabling.
To table.
To another date certain.
Till when?
October 27th.
27th?
No.
No, TBD.
October 11th.
October 11th?
Do the 25th in October.
October 25th?
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right. All those in favor of tabling the facilitation report? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
To October 25th.
To Oc.
To October 25th.
Is it the 25th? All those opposed? Abstained. Seven.
In the meantime, those corrections could be made.
I know what you're talking about.
Gosh.
Please.
All right. If anybody like to make a motion on the August 16th, 2018 minutes.
Move approval of the minutes from August 16th, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Tom Kennick, seconded by Barbara. Any changes or anything?
I didn't come across any changes.
I didn't either.
I did.
Thanks, Paul.
There's reference here that Chairman Harrington. I don't know what page it was on, but I do remember reading about it when I was looking at the cable TV.
Oh, here it is. Page 13.
You're interested?
Yeah.
Chairman Harrington.
I love that.
That should be changed to Counselor Harrington.
You're the chairman.
During that time I wasn't. That's funny.
Old habits. All right. See nothing other than that? All good. I'll call a question. All in favor of the August 16th minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero. Comments from the press? Comments from the public? Here or here? Whichever you prefer. And state your name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name's Steve Brulett. I'm Cook Terrace. Don't get used to it. I just moved up here a month ago. I just wanted to follow through on some thoughts that I shared with you last meeting. And that was about our alternatives, or potential alternatives to Comcast. And I heard a couple of things tonight that I wanted to address. And first of all, I wanted to thank Bill. He actually gave me this idea. So, kudos to you on something I hadn't even thought of. And that was, they call it municipality-owned Wi-Fi, sometimes broadband. And what that allows you is it gets past, is it Nancy? You had brought up before, I heard somebody else also, that said that the biggest obstruction to all of us, and I can understand that, is the lack of, for the new people to come in, when you put out a bid, it's almost pointless, it's kind of hopeless. I, you know, at first I hear that, and I don't want to hear anything's hopeless. But then I thought about it a little bit. If there's no infrastructure, why would they? What would motivate them to come in here unless they don't have that capital outlay? And so, when you brought that up, that kind of dovetailed into what you had said over there and said, all right, how do we fix this? Well, we got to find a way to make it more palatable to them, more attractive, more doable, more viable for them. And that is, we own it ourselves. At first glance, you think that's a lot of money, and it is. But I started doing the research once you motivated me to start looking this, looking this up. And I found that there are scores upon scores upon scores of towns and cities throughout this country, sometimes just little tiny towns. And they do it themselves. Now, how do they get the money back? That would be my next question.
Exactly what's going to happen.
It's going to be, right. And Finley had mentioned that, and I want to be a part of that, if that's possible.
I was just about to volunteer you.
Oh, thank you very much. But, you know, this, I'm not a financial guy, but I know that we have a few amongst us here that could probably figure out some financial vehicles, whether they be bonds, whether they be, you know, venture capitalists. I don't know. I wouldn't know where to begin that yet. But once I delve into this, and I, I can actually call them, the committee can call them, and ask them, how did you do it? What were your pitfalls? What were the snares? What was, what did you learn from this? You learn from others' mistakes. It's the best way to learn. And how did you succeed? Where did you go wrong? And how did you succeed? So that we don't have to waste time or money to get to the ultimate goal of being free. Then we own it. We don't have to concern ourselves with all the negativity anymore, because we own it. And what I found is, they get somewhere around 15% when you own it. You sell it to the other ISPs, they're not motivated to come in. Now they're competing for all the right reasons. As opposed to, you know, just charging whatever they want, tell you what they're going to charge, and they up it later on. Now they're competing all on the same ground. And that's what I think is what we all want. So, anyway, I just wanted to plant the seeds. I heard Finley bring up about the committee. I want to be a part, if I can.
I think you need to get his name and.
And, and I wouldn't mind making the calls. You know, if we split it up amongst five, six, seven of us, we could find out, there's going to be, there's going to be common threads there that could help us succeed. We can win this once and for all. Because if we just go about and put the bids out, well, guess what? Probably going to get the same results, just as you said, even though I didn't like it when you said it. You know?
But the truth is difficult to swallow.
I know it is. I know it is. But, you know, then I thought about it. But if we can get through this one obstruction right there and make it palatable to them, then it's just a matter of finding the financial way that we can make it happen. And then we'll pay off the bond if that's what it is through the use of charging these folks 15% or whatever the going rate is, and it's paid back. There was recently a Senate, that's why I was here, whether he was a senator or a representative, I found out, but later he's a representative. But there was a Senate Bill 170, it just came out in July. I guess Sununu was one of the ones that had backed it. And it's not us specifically, but I imagine there's ways of finding similarities and maybe getting them on board about this too. And it's mainly set up for rural communities, rural regions, like out there to the southwest, over by Keene and all that, Royce and all that stuff. But I, I read it a little bit, and I found it wasn't just about that. They were getting low quality out there because it just wasn't enough competition. But it was also the fact that, well, Keene in particular, because Keene's not a real small town. But Keene, they found out that Keene wasn't happy with their service. And that, that's right up her alley.
We're away from the microphone.
So, Keene's main thrust was that they just needed better service. And they're a part of that group right there, so there's already an in. So, for those of us that have connections with the senators and or the House of Representatives, because they have to go through them as well, maybe that'd be a good way to get some sway there too. So, anyway, that's all I got.
Thanks to you. Anybody further like to address council? Seeing none. I don't have my agenda. What's, what's the order?
Comments from the councils.
That's what we're left with. Comments from the council. The only thing that I'll have, I chatted with Paul about it earlier, is I, I was tagged on something that in fact Channel 9 came out with information that I guess West Nile and Triple E is coming back. And so, the conversation that had ensued on that form was that the town had sprayed before. And I didn't, I mentioned that I had never recalled the town spraying. And Paul, in fact, affirmed that.
Not in my 14 years.
He said he's never written a check for the spraying, so it hasn't happened.
Yeah, I got tagged on Facebook on that this afternoon as well.
Yep. So, it's something that I guess Rick Jones will be, I'm asking that he look into it and, you know, give us our advice as he would in that regard. Yep. So.
Actually, Eileen, help me with this. Last month, when they began to find mosquitoes that were positive for West Nile and EE out on the coast. And so, I had the same question, is, is what, you know, A, does Merrimack do its own testing? And B, you know, what is the protocol afterwards? Merrimack, according to the fire chief, does not do its own testing unless it's warranted. Because the way it is with mosquitoes, if they're positive in Nasher and they're positive in Concord, guess what? They're probably positive here in Merrimack as well. And he said, his answer was that they continually monitor, you know, the test results coming back from around the area, and then make a decision based on that. The problem with any kind of spraying for mosquitoes is some of the population's going to love it and some of the population is not, because it is a toss, a toxic entity. So, you know, I leave that to whoever is our health officer and the, and the fire chief with the EMTs.
Anything further? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Council Boyd, seconded by Tom Thornton. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Seven zero zero.
Good night.